Welcome to the Tuesday, November 3rd, of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Happy Election Day. I'm sure everyone in this room has probably already voted, which is great. All right, we'll go ahead and start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Weigant.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will start with the consent agenda. And every item on this agenda are items routine in nature. And we are going to pull a couple. I understand we're pulling item 14. And do we have any other items that need to be pulled from our board? And anyone from the public, either in public or virtually, like to pull an item from the consent agenda? We don't see any. All right, so with that, a motion by Euler, second by Holmes, and we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Let's move to item 14, which is the appointment of boards of directors of various special districts. And we have our county clerk recorder via Zoom. Good morning. Ryan Ronco, I know it's a busy day for you, so thank you for taking this.
Absolutely. Now, good morning Supervisor Gore and members of the board. This item that's before you is generally routine in nature, but this year it's a little less than routine. So I'm glad that it's being pulled so we can discuss it. Many of you are probably familiar with the fact that this resolution comes every election year. And it's kind of a two-parter. The first half of this required by Election Code Section 101.5 Subsection A is the appointment of individuals who completed the candidate filing process, did not have enough challengers in their race to force an election, and so they are appointed in lieu of election. And you have those names before you. The second half of this resolution is for those offices where nobody filed and there were vacancies that existed throughout the entire candidate filing process. And then Election Code Section 105.15B says that your board may fill those vacancies by appointment. And generally, we get one name for each of those vacant positions forwarded by the districts themselves. But you do not have to take the names that are forwarded to you by the districts. You can, at your pleasure, appoint any eligible voter to those positions. And in the case for which this has been pulled, we had the district submit two names for one position. And so I believe that it's up to your board on how you want to proceed. We just wanted to bring this item to you so that you could make those decisions. And I'll leave it there. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So Ryan, would you please clarify, I believe there's one district, right? Would you clarify that one? Because this is the one that's at concern.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So the South Placer Municipal Utility District has a director/ward that remained vacant through the candidate filing process. In that process of discussing how they might want to prepare a name for your consideration, there were multiple people that wanted to be considered for this position. So the incumbent and another individual wanted to be able to be considered for the one vacancy that exists. And because there's no real specificity in the Elections Code about whether the district can present you with multiple names, they decided to go ahead and present both names for your consideration. So it's specifically the South Placer Municipal Utility District where we have two people wanting to be considered for the one elected vacant position.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, we've got a couple of questions. Supervisor Euler?
Yeah. Conversely, the Suburban Pines Community Services District has five positions and no names submitted. Can we just randomly start naming citizens to that? Can we stick them on there? Do we have that authority? Can we?
You do. You may not want to do that, but it's certainly up to your board if you want to.
Yeah. Supervisor Gustafson?
So do we know the process by which these names came in later to these? Because there's one in particular, I'm just not sure what the process was and what the residency is anymore, so.
Sure. Yes, so we, so in an effort to be able to make it easier for your board to consider names, we do reach out, as has been the past practice, and it's not set in stone that we do it this way, but past practice has been that we go back to the district and find out, are there people that are contacting your district that are interested in being considered for this position? Almost always, those are the names of incumbent directors that did not complete the candidate filing process, whether that was, you know, their desire to just be reappointed and not have to come into file, or there was some problem in the filing process or whatever. But oftentimes, it's those incumbent directors that their names are forwarded back to your board for consideration.
And is there a process that the board has used in the past? I've asked my colleagues, or you, Ryan, to post these vacancies and then accept nominations for those? Or how do we?
No. Because, again, there's really, there's no specificity in the code regarding posting vacancies or anything like that. We did not post those vacancies. We just reached back to the board and say, are there people that are interested? Oftentimes, they are going to hear about interest more so than necessarily my office would hear about that interest, or maybe your office would hear about that interest. So we did not post. We did post these vacancies at the beginning of the candidate filing process, of course, to let the public know that the positions were going to be available, but not after the fact, after the candidate filing process closed.
Right. Well, especially those that are still vacant, we'd need to post those, right?
No, well, again, there's nothing that says that we have to post. We do try to prepare a press release to let people know that candidate filing has extended for that short window of time between 88 days before the election and 83 days before the election, so that the interested individuals could finish the candidate filing process. But we'd certainly be happy to do whatever the pleasure of the board is with regard to posting if that was the direction that you wanted to go.
Yeah, I think for my concern is just making sure that the public's aware that that ended up being vacant. And just because one person or two people contacted a district to have that seat doesn't necessarily mean the rest of the public was aware there ended up being that. And given that we're appointing, what, 45 others where there was no contest in these elections, it's, you know, concerning that the public may not be aware that in those same races there was vacancies. So it doesn't, I mean, I'm glad people are willing to serve, but I'd love to see a more transparent process to the public that these were not filed at the end of the election and that applications might be sought, that they should contact the district. I don't know if people knew that.
And maybe Supervisor Gustafson, we could do a little bit more robust outreach after this for those open seats. And maybe in the future, working with, Ryan, you could work with our board to do outreach on open positions. So that way, we do a more, you know, full outreach and we can contact our constituents as well. So that could be done in the future. Supervisor Holmes?
Well, Ryan, the South Placer Municipal Utility District, couldn't their board take action to appoint a new member?
Not when the vacancy is create, exists after the candidate filing process. That is the purview of your board. They can fill vacancies that occur during a candidate's, excuse me, an office holder's term, when somebody may fall off or move out, and then that vacancy is filled by the district board. But you're required under California Elections Code 105.1B to make these appointments when it exists during, after the candidate filing process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me do this real quick. I'm going to open it to the public for comments. That way I do that. Any comment from the public? All right. Oh, yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Vic Marky. I'm the current board member for SPMUD. I've been on the board since 2008. Every election since 2008, I was appointed because a member died. And I was appointed to the board after that. Over all those elections, for all the members, there was never anybody responding to that vacancy for all those years, except for one. One of the board members did not file for the election and pull papers, and so his seat was challenged, and that person, excuse me, that person won. That person left about a year later, and we asked Director John Murdock to come back, and he came back. In comes COVID. I have members of my family at risk. We've shut down all meetings. We do all meetings in Zoom at the request of Will Dickinson. And I'm thinking, do I really want to affect my mother-in-law who has Parkinson's with this? Do I really want to go out into the public and be a source of transmission? I take these things very seriously, and my wife and I are property managers and real estate brokers. And so I feel like my business is essential. I have to take care of my tenants and see, and make sure, and my mother-in-law's tenants, and make sure they're safe. So their safety is my concern. I just don't hold up at the house and hope that I don't catch something. I'm very active in the community. I have served on many things in Loomis currently. I'm a lion. And last February, when we had our crab feed, my wife and I were asked to step in for Buzz Hebert, and we served over 300 people in the chowder. We worked all day to accomplish that. I'm very involved in the community. I belong to the Heritage Board. I've ran several times in Loomis. My whole emphasis here is on community, safety, and concern. And when a person comes into our board and wants to talk, I'm thinking about them. I'm not thinking about me. I'm not thinking about my education, my career, because they don't care about that. They have a problem, they have an issue, and they hope that we're able to reach out to them and empathize with their problems. That's my concern. I've served this board to the best of my ability, bringing in all those social connections, all those groups I belong to, so that I can provide, excuse me, my constituents with the best service I can. And if it wasn't for this virus, I probably would have been more active in trying to get out there and get signatures. Next year, I will be Vice President. The year after that, I'll be President. I would like to continue for two years. So, and we on the board look forward to that. I would like to serve for those two years, and when I, my presidency is over, I will leave. And then Jim will have it free, if he still wants it, two years.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir, and your service. Appreciate that.
I have a quick question, if I may. Mr. Marky, before you, I just want to be clear on something. So you were the incumbent for this position?
Yes.
Okay. And so it was your seat, Mr. Mitchell's seat, and Mr. Williams' seats. The three of you were up.
Correct.
And Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Williams filed their statement of candidacy?
Correct.
They filed their paperwork?
Correct.
And you chose not to?
Because of the health concerns. And interesting enough, they were not challenged.
No, I know, but they actually took the steps to file their candidacy.
That's right. That's correct.
And if you had done that, then?
We wouldn't be.
Three names on this list and no names on this list.
Correct.
You chose, as the incumbent, you chose not to file for reelection?
Because of what the gentleman on the screen indicated, that past history indicates that there was never a challenger.
But you have to actually file your candidacy?
Correct.
Then you'd have been on this list, and we'd be appointing you de facto.
Correct. And neither did Jim.
Oh, I understand. But I'm just, I'm looking at an incumbent office holder who chose not to file for candidacy.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Jim Durfee. I live at 5901 Craig Court in Loomis. It's been five years since I stood at this podium, and so my public speaking skills may be a little bit eroded at this point in time, and I apologize for that. I did submit a letter of interest when I found that Mr. Marky had not filed. I think a lot of your board knows that I did manage the special districts for the county for a number of years, and I believe that that experience and my experience in managing wastewater in particular and special districts in general would be of benefit to the district. My interest is to get back into public service and be able to provide some of what I can provide back to the community that I live in. I've lived in Loomis since 1972, and I really would look forward to the opportunity to serve once again. With that, if any of you have any questions, I'd be happy. It's really wonderful to be here and to see all of you, though.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jim?
Oh, it looks like there's a question.
Supervisor Holmes?
So just to be clear, you didn't file until you saw that, or you didn't apply until you saw that Mr. Marky didn't?
That's correct. That's correct. I didn't file to run for office. I submitted a letter of interest to the district when I saw that the seat was open.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Any other comment from public? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, we do have somebody on Zoom.
Miguel, go ahead and unmute your mic and start your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Well, I'm a little bit confused. I didn't realize that you could send a letter in to the board when there was a vacancy that wasn't filled by somebody. So I'm not too sure about that process, but that, I guess that's the way it goes. Because how would you know that you could, I never knew you could send a letter in, but that's neither here nor there. A little bit concerned, though, that the incumbent chose not to run and is now asking to be appointed. I think Mr. Durfee should be appointed because he was the one that submitted the letter like it should be. So my two concerns are, and I guess you addressed it, in the future, though, people need to know that if nobody runs, you can send a letter in. I was never aware of that. And secondly, I think that you should only appoint the person that submitted the letter to the board within their timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. Any other public comment? Sorry, actually, since you've already spoken once, we'll leave it at that. And we're going to bring, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. I have a suggestion, and maybe we can do this. And that is, because we weren't aware, not everybody was aware this item was going to be pulled, perhaps we can do this. We can ask each of the candidates to submit a letter. They probably have to submit something about their qualifications, et cetera, and then we could take action at our next board meeting. That gives us some time to take a look at the candidates. I don't know either of the candidates. I don't know if that's something you all are willing to do or if you want to move forward, but that's my suggestion. Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I think knowing both candidates, I know they're both qualified, and I would make the motion to appoint Jim Durfee, to James Sevian Durfee, to the position.
Second.
All right. It looks like we have a motion and a second. So let's go ahead and take a, well, actually, we still have, well, let's guess, go ahead, County Council, let us know, because we've got the other item as well.
Well, just, we are going to need to, that is the motion on that part. Now we need a motion. If you could vote on that, then we'll need a motion to amend the current resolution. So.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. So let's just do a quick roll call, please.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler? Gustafson?
I think aye. I have a question, County Council. I'm sorry, Jim.
Mr. Marky, is this for all the remaining positions?
No. We'll find him back.
Okay, yes, I vote yes.
You're only talking about the SPMUD one.
Thank you. Vote yes.
And I'm going to abstain.
I'm abstaining.
All right, so motion carries. Thank you very much. And now we will move to take an item on the rest of the, the rest of item 14 with the amendment.
So my recommendation would be?
I have a quick question. On these, I was informed previously that one of the people on Exhibit B might not actually live in the district that they are seeking appointment to. Do we verify that?
Did we, or should we?
Yeah, I, my understanding is that the North Tillel Fire Protection District Division V candidate that we're being asked to consider under Exhibit B might not live in the district. Now, I don't know if there's a district residency requirement?
I believe there is, and we did actually verify that that individual does reside there. The reason we did that is?
Reside there or own a business there?
I can't answer that question. Megan, do you know?
Okay.
We didn't verify, the clerk's office didn't verify regarding the candidate. We?
What? Election office? Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan, Mr. Ronco actually verified that.
Okay.
Because that question had arisen there, we actually looked into it. It's not something we would ordinarily do.
Right.
Because we don't necessarily know the requirements of each of these districts. But because the issue was raised, elections did look into it.
And Supervisor Euler, I heard there was an affidavit that was signed of residency by Mr. LaVerdi, so I just wanted to make sure that, if that's the case, that that's on the record.
Since we got Mr. Ronco, maybe he can address that.
Yeah.
Sure. So I, we don't actually physically go and verify residency or have them fill out anything other than a voter registration card. And that voter registration card is presumed to show that person's residence. That, this, in this instance, we could certainly do a deeper dive and look into his residence, or, excuse me, his registration right now on the fly, if you'd like. But we, I can tell you that at the time that all of this was being discussed, this individual showed that he was a registered voter in the district.
Okay, thank you. I just, it was something that had been raised to me a little while ago, and I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion, or with that, can we?
So let's go back to the motion. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as amended to appoint James Durfee to the South Placer Municipal Utility District.
We already did that.
We already did that. Now we're adopting the resolution as amended to include that change.
All right, so that is a motion from Supervisor Holmes. And may I have a second?
If I may, just clarify, basically, we are just adopting the rest, the rest of the appointments, but we've already adopted that one. So we could simply adopt the rest of the appointments absent that one, because we already did that one?
Well, no. Now we need an actual resolution that includes the entire list. The reason this had to be pulled to begin with is we had those two candidates.
Okay. So you're saying, basically, to adopt the resolution modifying Exhibit, but modifying Exhibit B to strike the name of Victor Marky and only have Jim, James Durfee as the, as the only one on there?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Cool, thank you.
All right, so I don't know who the motion, motion by Euler, second by Gustafson. All right.
Motion by Holmes. Correct.
No, motion by Euler, who clarified.
Because you clarified. Got it.
And, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Thank you very much.
Well, this is much confusion on Election Day. What could go wrong?
I do. We have a great clerk recorder, and he's going to make sure he does a great job. His staff are doing a great job. Supervisor Gustafson?
I just, on Suburban Pines, what happens there is my question. There's no names submitted. We?
Start picking people. Shove them on there.
Well, can we work with the clerk recorder to do some outreach?
I really do think the public needs to understand the process. If I wasn't clear, then I'm assuming others might not be. When there is a vacancy, how to get your name on the list.
Mr. Ronco, when was the last time we had somebody on that board?
Oh.
It's been over a decade.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, see, I'm, as I said, we need to educate the public, because I didn't know.
And maybe we, they no longer need a board, so that's a question for another day.
Another day. Thank you.
There is, incidentally, just to follow up on outreach, there is a process under the Public Utilities Code for public utilities, actually, to put a process in place for that board to do the appointment versus this board. So that's something that perhaps we can do some outreach after, after this for the future.
I'm just going to blame the attorney for SPMUD for sending it to us. I think that's, that's where the blame properly lies. It's with their attorney.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to public comments, since we haven't done that yet. So this is an item for the public to comment on any item that is not on our agenda. We will start with the public first. If there's anybody in the public who'd like to, to address this board on any item not on our agenda. And anyone via Zoom? And yes, we've got somebody via Zoom. Go ahead, Megan.
Cheryl, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
First of all, I'd like to say that I am a United States Air Force veteran, and I really object to this meeting being held today. Several of my peers are working at polling places and trying to get the vote out, and I think having to choose between items on this agenda and doing their civic duty, it's an American privilege and a right to vote. So I would like to just state that. I wanted to talk about the housing element update process. I sent Shauna a message. It seems as though the schedule is out of order from what one would expect. A housing element update document, a review draft, was sent out. MAC meetings should have been held prior to that to take feedback. Instead, what has happened is there are Planning Commission meetings and Board of Supervisor meetings scheduled before the end of the year. There are several problems with that. Hidden Falls recently had a MAC meeting, not a MAC meeting, a community meeting, so it can be done. Granite Bay has a large enough room, it's larger than the room that you're in, to hold a public meeting with social distancing. And 17.60.140 public hearings, notice to municipal advisory councils, any application that requires a public hearing before the planning commission shall first be submitted to any local municipal advisory council. This is a requirement. So with 400,000 residents impacted with community plans, currently Shauna has put out, she's done a wonderful job, her fact sheet's beautiful. However, there are snippets of information all over the place. No one is really making the connection that anything is going on in the public. There are no ties to the community plan in her documentation. So backroom meetings have been held where parcels have been identified. The public isn't aware of this. They don't know what the land use is going to be, and we have to live with this for the next eight years as residents. Supervisor Euler was voted out of office, and for him to put something on the agenda that we have to live with for the next eight years is really unacceptable. We would like to see the MAC meetings reinstated and the general plan housing element to be reviewed, to be publicized, for one. And the state deadline is listed in her fact sheet as May 31st. There is no reason to do this. The document shouldn't even be out to review, and it's only out to review for 30 days. It should have been 60 days. If there are any zoning changes that are going to happen with this document, then it needs to be out there for longer than that. Steve Pedretti has been in office for multiple years.
Cheryl, can you wrap it up, please?
Fine. The housing element has, we haven't produced any affordable housing. We're now 7,400 units behind. I think it's time for the public to have input on what would happen with the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and this is an opportunity for board comments. I will make a comment, and that is, yes, this is Election Day. My understanding is that our Board of Supervisors has taken action, or actually had meetings almost every election day. Because our meetings are on Tuesday. Fortunately, people have the opportunity to vote, starting usually 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And now we've had, we all have absentee usually 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and now we've had, we all have absentee ballots. Most of us have already probably dropped our ballots in the mail or in a drop box, and so we are very fortunate that people have the opportunity to not only vote, but also participate in public hearings. And for those who are unable to participate in a public hearing, just like other Election Days, people have the opportunity to send in public comment to our board. Any other comments from my colleagues? Supervisor Euler?
Yeah, just a couple of quick observations. First of all, question of counsel, our housing element extends to all of our cities? So the city of Roseville has to abide by our housing element, Rockland and Lincoln?
No, strictly for the unincorporated area.
I'm pretty sure that public comment from that individual indicated that our housing element affects 400,000 people, but last time I checked, we only determine the housing element for the unincorporated part of the county, which is fewer than 100,000 people.
That is correct.
Yeah, not 400, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then, second, I, maybe the clerk of the board knows, I don't recall personally being the one who has agendized any items before this board this year. That's the prerogative of the chair, and if the chair gets a specific request from a board member that something might be agendized, then the chair can bring that forward. I can only remember once in the history of this board where a board member actually had to speak up in a public meeting to get something agendized. But absent that, are you aware of anything I've agendized this year?
No, Supervisor, I'm not.
I'm not aware either, thank you very much.
Throw me under the bus, okay.
Yeah, that's why you'd get the big bucks, sitting in that seat.
All right, there we go. All right, any other comments from my colleagues? Any reports, Tom, from your office?
No other items.
All right. Let's go ahead and move on to our first item of business, well, first timed item of business, which is a commendation for the Placer County Food Bank. So I'm going to read this first, and this is a matter of commendation recognizing the Placer Food Bank for 50 years of service in Placer County. Whereas Placer Food Bank is a nonprofit organization created in 1970 that has served the greater Placer County community for 50 years, and whereas Placer Food Bank is a member affiliate of Feeding America, and along with its 200 sister food banks across the nation, has succeeded in its continuing mission to sustain communities by nourishing families experiencing food insecurity and educating the community about hunger while advocating for hunger relief. And whereas Placer Food Bank is the leading hunger relief charity, serving those suffering from food insecurity in Placer, El Dorado, and Nevada counties, and as the primary food collection and distribution center in the area, Placer Food Bank distributed a record 6.8 million pounds of fresh and non-perishable foods last year, providing more than 8 million meals. And whereas with the support of Feeding America and their partners, and with the generous donations from businesses and members of local communities, Placer Food Bank helps to ensure individuals, families, and children and seniors have access to fresh California grilled produce and healthy non-perishable goods. And whereas the Placer Food Bank makes food accessible to the community by way of drive-through mobile distribution centers, you are all very creative during this time, deliveries to low-income seniors, and by providing kid-friendly backpacks next to students in need at Title One schools. And whereas Placer Food Bank has been honored for 50 years of serving as a vital hunger relief charity in the region, Placer Food Bank continually demonstrates its dedication to providing hunger relief to people in our communities and commitment to ensuring its role in this critical work for many, many years to come. Let it be known that the commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held today on November 3rd. Thank you so much, and with us we have Dave Martinez, he is the Executive Director of the Placer Food Bank. Come on up, Dave.
Thank you very much, and really appreciate the recognition. Placer Food Bank has been in the Roseville community and has resided in the Placer County for nearly 50 years, and as we all seen with COVID, you know, the, the expectation that we'll be here for another 50 years is definitely on the table. We've seen a rise, pre-COVID, we were at 90,000 individuals a month, we're currently at about 150,000 a month. We are very fortunate to be a part of Feeding America, so for most that may not know, a Feeding America Food Bank may cover the entire state of Oregon. They may cover the, you know, the entire Bay Area, and as a Feeding America Food Bank, we're very fortunate to cover the three counties, starting from Sacramento County up to Lake Tahoe. In the Lake Tahoe area, we work with the Food Bank in Reno, Feeding America Food Bank covers half the state of Nevada, and they cover North Shore and South Shore for us, so great partnership there. Again, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for this recognition, and I would also like to encourage you to come out to one of the drive-through distributions. Last week in Rockland, we had nearly 400 cars lined up to get food. The community we're serving today, right now, are those that are impacted by COVID from a financial perspective, and we were recently at CDSS, California Department of Social Services, where we were informed that it is going to be a new normal for us to see this number continue for over the next five to 10 years. So as a Feeding America Food Bank, you know, obviously focused on the three counties, that 6.8 will probably rise to close to 10 million that we'll have to sustain over the next probably five, 10 years. So the support of the Board of Supervisors is vital, since you are a connection to the greater community. You make decisions here that impact not only us as individual residents, but also in terms of nonprofits and what we are expected to do as well, and so we look forward to your partnership. And again, Monty Gore, I appreciate your time very much, and I greatly appreciated and humbled by this opportunity.
Thank you, Dave, for all of your hard work, and Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, we've, we go way back.
Yes, we do, sir.
And we got in, it was 1975 when I first became aware of you, because I did some work on their vehicles when you were down at the Government Center.
Correct, Dwyer Center.
I just did the math and almost choked, it's been 45 years. Wow, time flies. But I got to tell you, from where I saw when I first got aware of you and what you've done up to this point is fantastic. You've done an exemplary job, and I just want to thank you for that. Other than, both our hair is a little bit different color now, but we're both a little bit wiser, so thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you very much, I know you're wiser, I don't know about myself.
And Supervisor Holmes, we need to actually vote, so would you make a motion, please?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, let me.
Thank you very much.
Hand this to you.
Thank you.
We'll do a quick vote if you want to.
That'd be great.
We've got a photographer right there.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, it's a good thing I have colleagues to keep me on track. So we'll move to item two, which is Community Forum, 2019 Immigration and Customs Enforcement Access Information Report, and I believe, do we have Captain Powers on the line on Zoom?
I am here.
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Gore, members of the board, Captain Dave Powers with the Sheriff's Office and the Placer, South Placer Jail Commander. This presentation is to provide you with the 2019 SB 54 statistical information. Senate Bill 54, also known as the California Values Act, became law on January 1st, 2018. The Placer County Sheriff's Office has policies in place that are in line with SB 54, and we comply with the state law. The Truth Act required beginning in 2018, the sheriff to hold a community forum and present data pertaining to ICE holds, notifications, or transfer requests from the previous year. We provide information regarding an inmate's release date or respond to an ICE request for notifications prior to release, only if that information is available to the public or the inmate has qualifying convictions specified under Government Code 7282.5. We do not provide work or home information in accordance with the law. In 2019, we received 72 requests from ICE requesting notification of release or transfer, which is down from the previous year. Of the 72 requests, we provided advance release notice to ICE on 14 inmates who had qualifying convictions. We will not hold and transfer an inmate to immigration authorities unless authorized by judicial warrant, and no judicial warrants were received in 2019. However, the ICE, if ICE is present at the time of release, the individual may be taken into their custody. In 2019, we had five individuals taken into ICE custody after release. There were no requests for ICE interviews during 2019. This concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for my colleagues? All right, we'll open this item to the public. Anybody on Zoom or, nope, okay, we'll close this item, and it looks like we don't need to have any action, so thank you for the update, appreciate that, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to our 9:25 timed item, which is a presentation about the Williams Schools in Placer County, and this will be presented by our Superintendent of Schools, Gail Garbalino Mojica. Good morning, Gail.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Gail Garbalino Mojica, Placer County Superintendent of Schools. I am here to report to you on our annual Williams Schools. As a point of clarification, this was a piece of law that was enacted in 2005, basically looking at all of the public schools in the state of California and putting them into deciles based upon their academic performance index ranking. And at that point, our accountability system in the state of California was the Academic Performance Index, and the schools were given a number between 200 and 1,000, basically identifying where they fell as according to their academic performance. We have not had the API or the Academic Performance Index for many years. We have transitioned to the state of California, to the California Dashboard. So unfortunately, the data that I'm going to give to you today is a little outdated. These schools were selected based upon the API in 2012, and as you are aware, we are currently in 2020 years. So with that, and I don't think I have control of the PowerPoint, but whoever has control, can we move to the next slide, please? We'll do the next one, there we go. Our two schools that were identified in 2012 as falling into decile three were Auburn Union, in the Auburn Union School District, the Rock Creek Elementary School, and the Roseville City School District, we had the Woodbridge Fundamental School. And as you can see in 2012, what their API score was, so 719 for Rock Creek and 753 for, for Woodbridge. So that qualified them for additional oversight by the county superintendent. Can you, next slide, please? With the 2020, we have to do an increased oversight. We look at instructional materials, we look at their facilities, whether they're in good repair, whether they're clean, whether they have accurate information on the school accountability report card, and their teacher missed assignments, whether or not the teachers were appropriately credentialed and assigned to their classrooms. So as you can see, for Rock Creek and Auburn Union, we had no findings for Rock Creek. And on the next slide, please? For Woodbridge Fundamental School, again, we had no findings as well. So with that, that concludes my annual Williams School update. When I presented last year, Supervisor Gusterson asked me a question, she said, well, how are they doing currently? And I didn't have that information available, because as we all know, we are in a pandemic. State testing last spring was canceled, so I don't have any data that's from the last year, but I do have data from the previous year. And so for Supervisor Gusterson, the Woodbridge Fundamental School, in our dashboard, we have a five-color dashboard in the state of California, so probably mirroring something that we're all familiar with, but the dashboard that we have for public school accountability is red, orange, yellow, green, and blue, or blue and green. Blue and green are fine, you want to be, that's where you want to strive for. Woodbridge is in yellow for English Language Arts and Math, and Rock Creek is in orange for English Language Arts and Math. So that's currently where they fell last year on the state's accountability system, the California Dashboard. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gail, appreciate that update. Go ahead, Supervisor Gusterson.
Thank you for that update, I appreciate the current status and all the hard work everybody's doing, and I just wanted to take a moment, Gail, to also thank you for your support of helping us get our Internet broadband survey out to the parents, because I've heard from quite a few parents that are concerned, and we do, I think the message coming from the schools and the superintendents and the principals is more powerful than our message to the parents to fill that survey out, and I just want to thank you. I heard that we got over 700 responses within the first 12 hours of you supporting that, so really making a difference in our survey results and giving us some tools on that to help our students in this time when so many of them depend on Internet and broadband services to, to school from home or in some hybrid models. So thank you for your update, and I wanted to take a minute to thank you for that as well.
My pleasure.
All right, we will go ahead and open this up to the public. Any comments from the public? Nobody here, nobody online? All right. Gail, thank you very much. We don't have to take any action, but we appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you.
All right, item 4A, which is a commendation for the Women's Improvement Club of Roseville, and I hope that we have Doris Kilzie on the line, and I'm going to present this, and then if she's on the line, she can make a couple of comments, so we will present it virtually. But this is in the matter of a commendation recognizing the Women's Improvement Club of Roseville for 110 years of service to the community. Whereas the Women's Improvement Club of Roseville was formed in 1910 by a group of women who saw an opportunity to establish a foundation for positive developments in their newly-formed city through volunteer service while developing leadership skills and forming lasting friendships. And whereas one of the group's founding members was Cora Woodbridge, we were just talking about Woodbridge Elementary School, who went on to serve three times in the ninth, as the Ninth District Representative for the California State Assembly after being elected as the first woman to fill that seat. And whereas many of the institutions and infrastructure we see in Roseville today exist as a result of the hard work of the Women's Improvement Club of Roseville, including community organizations, parks and recreation facilities, street trees, and landscaping, and even the public sewer system. The group also established the city's first library, the Carnegie Library, that serves today as the Carnegie Museum, spearheaded the effort to establish a high school in Roseville, and advocated a Chamber of Commerce. And whereas the Women's Improvement Club of Roseville continues to make a positive impact on our community by participating in efforts that support vital causes such as the arts, conservation, education, and literacy. The group also supports a number of organizations that address issues including domestic violence, chronic and terminal illness, homelessness, children's advocacy, and veterans' issues. And whereas the Women's Improvement Club of Roseville is being honored for 110 years of service in Roseville and beyond. As a member group of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, the Women's Improvement Club of Roseville joins nearly 100,000 people who are united in their dedication to volunteer service to make their communities a better place to live. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held today, November 3rd, 2020, recognizing the Women's Improvement Club of Roseville for 110 years of service to the community. That is a long time to serve our community, and Doris, you are there, so please go ahead and make a few comments if you would.
Well, we'd like to thank you for the commendation, and yes, the Women's Improvement Club has been around for 110 years. One of the things that we are known for is that we helped with the Spanish Flu, which was approximately 100 years ago, and very, very close and very near and dear to our hearts as we are in this pandemic. We are, we are still helping with the Carnegie Library. One of our members sits on the board for the Historical Society. We do anything and everything that we can to help babies. We think our future lies in the, in our babies. We do Shot at Life, which is helping babies all over the world through vaccinations. We do the Taylor House and Ticket to Dream, which are both helping foster children, and we continue to help the world. We do, we're everyday people, helping everyday people every day, and we thank you for the commendation.
Thank you, Doris, very much, and thank you. Please give our thanks to the members of the Women's Improvement Club, really appreciate your efforts in our community, it really does make a difference. And with that, we need to approve the commendation. And with that, we need to approve the commendation. I have a motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Weigant. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, and we'll make sure we get the commendation to you, Doris. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
And it looks like we're actually a little bit on time. And we have our 9:50 item, which is another proclamation recognizing Placer County as a Purple Heart County. And so I've got a proclamation, but I've got a gentleman here. So if you want to actually share what this is before I read the proclamation, I've got three gentlemen wearing purple. So actually, let me go ahead and read the commendation, and then I'll have somebody there make a comment. "In the matter of a proclamation establishing Placer County as a Purple Heart County, whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of Placer County residents who served in the Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many United States soldiers have given their lives while serving in the Armed Forces. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of Purple Hearts is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure that we never forget. And whereas Placer County honors the service and sacrifice of our Purple Heart recipients wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans." Now therefore, let it be proclaimed in the above proclamation, that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Placer County Board of Supervisors on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held November 3, 2020, proclaiming Placer County as a Purple Heart County. Let's go ahead. May I have a motion, please? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate this coming to our board. And I know that our citizens in Placer County respect our military veterans, our military, and especially those who have been wounded or given the ultimate sacrifice. So gentlemen, please go ahead.
First I would like to do is have my people speak, talk. My name is Ron Manharris. I'm a Finance Officer of Chapter 385 in Bolson, also a Finance Officer of California. These two individuals here is the Commander of 385, and this is a Vice Commander from our. We kind of do this on a regular basis, sort of trying to get people to bring Purple Hearters. There's a lot of places where they could actually go, like I've done.
Will you stand up closer to the microphone?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Basically, we've done El Dorado, got down to a city, which is, lost my area, Rancho Cucadova. So there we are. And we've got one in Plymouth now, which is, they're still doing it. And that was because everybody's having a problem with stuff coming in. But anyhow, what we've done today is to put out some flags here that will be welcome to you. You can place them on wherever you want. We have the stuff that if you need extra, I've got reason to get it for you. And basically, I think I've got basically everybody here. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your service. And I also would like to just recognize, we have another veteran in the room, Phil Jordan, who is with the American Legion Post 169, and he's the Chair of the Roseville Veterans Hall Board. So we really appreciate our veterans. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to recognize our veterans. And I do have the signs here on the front row. And you know, I'd love to ask our board to consider allowing for us to have a reserved space for a Purple Heart recipient, maybe at our Seidra Building. That might be a really good location since we have lots of folks go in and out of that building on a regular basis. And I think we actually have two sets. So maybe our facility staff could find a second location where we could honor our Purple Heart recipients.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'd love to hand this to you all, if that's okay with you. Let me come on down.
Just end standing. Let's see. Do we have?
You got this one, right? I'll take it. How about you and Ron get in there?
Yeah, actually, I don't know. It might be nice to have a stand behind him. That would be great.
Thank you.
Do we have somebody who? Thank you. You guys want to join me? And one on either side? You know, Phil, come and join me as well, since you are a veteran. And I think it's really important that we recognize everyone. We've got our board behind us.
All right.
Somebody came, that was nice.
Yes. All right, here we go.
Big smiles.
Big smiles. One, two, three.
Thank you. And Phil, do you want a photo as well? One more.
Yes.
Thank you, let's do that. Oh, and you have Purple Heart masks. I'd like to.
Yeah. Got the.
And then they feel like if it's on the board, then they won't put it out.
Look good, feel good, right?
Getting rid of the district. Thank you. So there's no, three of them don't live in our district alone. It isn't just one.
One, two, three.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you for recognizing me.
Our pleasure.
To you and all the supervisors.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Districts and vote at large. Like we did.
Thank you so much. Thank you, gentlemen. It's nice to be able to recognize the service of our community. And look at this, 9:55. We have item six, which is our presentation from our Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board. Good morning, Amy. Nice to see you in person.
Nice to see you as well. Good morning, Chair Gore and members of the board. I am Amy Ellis, the Director of the Adult System of Care. Today, I am here with Lisa Cataldo, who will be joining me in a second here, from the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board Chair, to allow her to present to you their annual report of board's activities for fiscal year 2019-20, and the needs and successes of the county's mental health and substance use treatment systems. The board has 12 seats representing all supervisory districts, and with the requirement that 50% of the board be a consumer or family member. One of the seats is for a former, is for a member of the Board of Supervisors, and Supervisor Jim Holmes currently fulfills this role. I am grateful for the service of our board members on the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board, and will now turn the time over to Lisa to present their activities over this past year.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Gore and members of the board. I'd like to start by thanking the community members who volunteer their time to serve the community on this board. Last year, the board members who helped achieve the activities I will be reviewing were the still current members Jeff McLennan, Brandy Baggett, Dr. Jessica Del Pozo, Joanna Julian, Claire Buckley, and Linda Layton, and former board members Yvonne Bond, David Bartley, Sharon Behrens, Katrina Brown, Greg Carrillo, and Diane Shintok. We serve by hearing staff reports, reviewing contracts and data, performing site visits, attending community behavioral health forums and events, and listening to the needs of the community. Community engagement, recruitment, and visibility is a constant focus of this board. As a result of these efforts, goals and recommendations are created in the areas of mental health, substance use services, and children's services. Some of the highlights of the past year include, one, the board became more knowledgeable and engaged in MHSA planning process and three-year plan development. One of our current board members, Claire Buckley, was added to the leadership team of the Campaign for Community Wellness. Continued focus for the board in the next year will include advocating for enhanced development of the crisis continuum and receiving better MHSA data through the development of an electronic data portal. Two, our Alcohol and Drug Committee focused efforts on the availability of medication-assisted treatment within the county and reviewed data related to accessibility of services through the expansion of the drug-medical organized delivery system. Of special note is that data showed services are expanding for slightly less county contribution due to increased state/federal funding in the programs. Also, the MAT grant in the jail allowed more inmates to stay on medication, assisted treatment while in jail, and upon discharge. And I just would like to note that I do have someone that's personally in jail now and is receiving very good treatment and medication. And it's nice that I can say that firsthand. Continued focus for the board will be the availability and distribution of Narcan and rates of fentanyl used within the county. Our children's services reviewed and learned about the county's new Family Mobile Team Service and the school-county collaborative implementation of wellness centers in South Placer. This board will advocate for continued support and expansion of these promising services. And finally, our Adult Services Committee focused on Placer's implementation of assisted outpatient treatment and advocated for better utilization of this tool. This advocacy will be continued focus, will be a continued focus of the board. In conclusion, we appreciate the opportunity to discuss the work of the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board, and know that your board's support is critical to the success of these vital programs. Thank you. And do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Lisa. I really appreciate the work that you and the volunteers do.
Thank you.
And Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Lisa. How long have you been on this board?
Four and a half years now.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. For some reason, the members of the Board of Supervisors thought that I'd be more qualified to be on the Mental Health Board, for some reason. It's not working. But you know, the board is made up of providers of the services, family members, and consumers. And you can go have a conversation with anybody at any time. And if this subject comes up, they have a family member or someone in their immediate circle that suffers with some of these issues. And the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Alcohol Advisory Board are the eyes and ears for this board to understand what's going on there. And so I really appreciate the hard work that they do to try to keep. It's a very difficult problem to get your arms around and to figure out what's going on. But I think the state of California and Placer County is doing a very good job at providing the services for those folks. So thank you so much for your service. And Amy, thank you for your service on that.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes.
All right, and we can open this up to the public if there are any comments on Zoom or in the public here. All right. I appreciate the presentation very much. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice afternoon. Or look at that, we're still morning. I cannot believe that we're actually on time. We haven't been on time in a little while. This is the last time we were on time. And let's see, our next timed item is 10:15. So we are going to move to department items. And if we've got Paul Breckenridge on the line, we've got item 10A, New Health and Human Services Office Buildings Stipend to Unsuccessful, unsuccessful competing design-build teams. And she's, there he is. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Gore, members of the board. Paul Breckenridge, Capital Improvements Manager, Facilities Management. Here to request your board's approval of the next step in the design-build process of the new Health and Human Services facility. The action requested is for approval of stipends that would be paid to each of the two unsuccessful competing design-build teams in the amount of $100,000 each, totaling an amount not to exceed $200,000, and authorize the Director of Facilities Management or Design Group to issue the stipends. Your board amended the five-year Facilities Capital Improvement Plan in November of last year to include a new Health and Human Services office building and proceed with design and construction. So following that, Preparation Services Division issued an RFP for the Phase 1 qualification phase for design-build entities for the design and construction of the new facility. 12 proposals were submitted, and all were found to be qualified. Representatives of Health and Human Services, the County Executive Office of Facilities Management interviewed all 12 teams. Evaluation of these teams has resulted in the recommendation of three teams to move ahead to the Phase 2 proposal phase. Core Construction out of Auburn with PBK Architects, Flint Builders out of Roseville with Ventris Architects, and Turner Construction out of Sacramento with AC Martin Architects. These teams have been selected to compete for the contract to design and construct the new HHS office building. One of the three competing design-build teams will be selected and will not receive a stipend, but will enter into a contract with the county for design and construction of the new facility. Awarding stipends to unsuccessful teams is a common practice in design-build competitions as compensation for their efforts in getting to the proposals. The Phase 2 requests for proposals for the three competing teams will be issued this month. The same county representatives associated with the Phase 1 selection will provide feedback to the teams and evaluate the three design proposals as they progress over the next few months. Capital improvement staff will then return to your board in 2021 to request approval to award a contract to the recommended design-build team to design and construct a new facility using the design-build procurement method with estimated construction completion in the fall of 2023. In order to proceed, staff requests that your board approve this request. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Paul. Did you say estimated completion fall of 2023?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No questions from my colleagues, and we'll open this up to the public. Do we have any comments, either in person or on Zoom?
Not on Zoom.
All right, we will close public comment, bring it back to our board. Oh, wait a second, we do have someone. So let's go ahead and take the Zoom comment, please.
Leslie, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Leslie Warren, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
This is Leslie Warren, Auburn. I had a question about how the $100,000 cost per applicant was determined and whether or not applicants are required to demonstrate how the $100,000 were expended.
Yeah, thank you. I can respond to that.
Sure.
So yeah, the $100,000 is kind of a typical stipend for the design-build, typical design-build process. And for the size of building, or the size of facility and the work associated with it, that it is kind of a standard amount to kind of take on the scope that is associated with that. So we do have kind of criteria in place that gets to the teams that aren't successful as to their completion of those tasks. So we make a determination at the end of the proposal process whether they qualify to receive that $100,000.
Thank you, Paul. And do we have any other questions in the public?
I have a question for Paul, just to follow up.
Yeah, go ahead, Supervisor.
Hey, Paul, if you would, just a guesstimate on your part. If the county did not engage the design-build process and try to attract- If the county did not engage the design-build process and try to attract private sector partners into this process, time to construction and construction costs in excess of what we would otherwise pay under the design-build process, do you have a guesstimate?
In excess of, can you clarify the question again?
Yeah, basically, what I'm getting at is it's in our interest to have more firms rather than less engage in our design-build process when we build our facilities. And paying the stipend is part of getting firms to participate. If we weren't engaged in this kind of process and we were doing solely a county-sourced project where the county bid it, the county did it, the county did everything, how much additional time and cost would go into building a facility like this as opposed to engaging the private sector like we do?
Yeah, it would be substantially more than this effort that we're looking at here. And the value that we get back from the design-build effort for the proposals through this proposal process is exceptional, and we found that both with our animal services and the South Placer Jail facility, that this effort is extremely valuable. So the effort for costs associated with the stipends and the effort going in is very valuable to the county and to get to best solutions for the project.
Yeah. And when we engage this process and we pay a stipend, we are able to essentially capitalize on the intellectual property that went into creating the proposals. So even if somebody's proposal might not have been selected, they might have had a good suggestion for some component of what it is we are doing that we can then incorporate into whatever it is we move forward with.
Excellent point. Yes, that's true.
So we do receive value from having these part, these additional firms go through the process of analyzing our needs and then coming up with a proposal that meets our needs because we then leverage some of those ideas in what we ultimately get built.
Absolutely, and we will be doing that. We found that to be true on our other design-build projects, and it was an essential part of those processes.
Right. All right. I just, I think it's important for folks to understand because it looks like, well, shouldn't that just be a cost of doing business? You know, you bid and it costs you something to put your bid together, but really, on something as significant as the future home for Health and Human Services and all of the different public touchpoints and the different facets, that, you know, services that we deliver through a facility like this, having more eyes on the project is definitely in our interest. And compensating folks for their time in giving us their ideas, I think ultimately serves the taxpayers very well.
Agreed. And I would just add to that, that the competitive nature of it will drive down that, hopefully, again, it will drive down the cost of the bill.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gustafson, question?
Actually, I was just going to further that discussion because I don't think the public often understands that when we do go out to bid on a project, we're forced to take the lowest bid, and often, we find, and I'm not speaking for the county in particular, I'm thinking of my former career where individuals bid on projects that are underqualified and it's very, very hard to ever right that ship once they start work on a project. And significant delays were incurred in a highway project at 89 in Tahoe City, as you know, with the roundabouts administered by Central Federal Lands and Tahoe Transportation District. But the community suffered enormously far, far more in losses because of an unqualified contractor in that situation who was unable to finish the project, and they had to bring in someone else. So I think those are some of the things the public doesn't always understand when they might see a payment like this.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. We used this process when we built the South Placer Jail. We were able to use some of the components from the other applicants. The jail was finished ahead of time, and it saved several million dollars, and I'm thinking almost $20 million.
Thank you. All right, Lynn, we've finished our discussion, and we can go ahead and take action. A motion by Yuler, second by Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
You know, if y'all don't mind, I'd like to just go to item 12 and wrap that up before we move to Health and Human Services. So Brett Wood, we're going to take 12, which is RevQ Information Management System, Ontario Systems LLC of Munis, Indiana.
Thank you very much, Supervisors. My name is Brett Wood, and I'm joined today by Mr. Doug Jastro, your Revenue Services Manager. We're here today to request your board approve an award of a contract with Ontario Systems LLC of Munis, Indiana, for the purchase of RevQ, a revenue services information management system, including the related software and support services, in the maximum amount of $558,686 effective through June 30th of 2021, funded by the Revenue Services Fiscal Year 2021 final budget. We're also asking for your board's approval for the annual renewal of licensing and support for the system for an additional four years in the dollar amounts noted in the memo, as well as authorize the purchasing manager to sign all the required documents. As a little bit of background and history for your board, the Revenue Services Division of the County Executive Office utilizes a database and information management system designed and produced by Columbia Ultimate Business Systems, often called Cubs, which is owned by their parent company, Ontario Systems. The Cubs system has been in use for over 20 years within the county, and that's operated by Ontario Systems but resides on locally-owned county servers. The current system has experienced a number of upgrades throughout the years, and customizations have specifically addressed our county's needs. However, the underlying technology of that system was developed with a DOS-like system and is now obsolete. In addition, its rudimentary reporting capabilities often fail to meet the Revenue Services Division's evolving needs. Revenue Services has obtained a proposal from Ontario Systems for the replacement system. It is called RevQ. This RevQ system includes the same key functionality of the Cubs system, as well as improved reporting, accounting, and archiving functionality. The ease of use of the new system will decrease training time for new employees and allow staff to more fully utilize the collection and accounting tools available. Upgrading to this system, this replacement system will provide the Revenue Services with the assurance that their existing legacy data will be properly converted while also maintaining compatibility with the other data systems that we currently interface with. Revenue Services partnered with the IT Department and Procurement to negotiate a contract with Ontario Systems for the new system. Implementation is expected to take approximately six months when the Cubs system will be deactivated. The total contract amount of $558,686 includes a one-time implementation cost of $358,250. That was a typo in our memo where we said $385. Annual software subscription costs of $49,176, annual support of $76,000, and an incremental cost of $75,000 for phone notification mailing services, which are billed on a transactional basis. Costs for the first five years of this support have also been negotiated to assure that those costs are solid and fixed and will have no more than a 3% escalation at a, it will, the increase will be capped at a 3% rate for the next five years. With that, Doug and I are happy to request your approval and be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brett. My question is, you said DOS-like? Oh, my goodness. I mean, I remember learning DOS in high, no, in high school, which was longer than 20 years ago. So it probably needs to, it probably needs to be upgraded. All right, Supervisor Gustafson, you had a question?
I sure do. Thank you. I was wondering, Brett or Doug, on these sorts of contracts, since these companies are constantly kind of being bought up and out, and we have a five-year contract, but we're investing a huge amount of money into this system, do we have any other longer assurances from the company that they'll continue to do updates and provide these services beyond the five years?
We have used the existing system for 20 years with this company, so we feel fairly confident that they will continue to provide the support.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like there are no other questions from our board. We'll open it up to the public for any questions.
There are none.
All right, we'll bring it back to take action. Motion by Wigan, second by Gustafson. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to our 10:15 timed item, which is an update from our Health and Human Services and the COVID-19 response. So good morning, Dr. Oldham. Nice to see you today.
Good morning. Chair Gore, nice to see you too. Good morning, Supervisors. Rob Oldham with Health and Human Services. We are back after our special East Placer edition of our COVID updates last week to provide your board with our regularly scheduled monthly HHS COVID update. Last week, we updated your board on several items, including our COVID-related data and metrics, including a recent uptick in cases threatening to push Placer County back into the red tier, our data and responses specific to Eastern Placer, the state's new health equity metric on steps HHS and our community partners have been taking to better engage with our community on COVID prevention, and on new impending state guidance. You can bring up the slides now, please. All right, it worked. Thanks. This week, I will provide an update on COVID-related data and metrics and our partnerships, and then we'll hand off to Mike Romero, our Public Health Program Manager, who will talk about our COVID testing resources, our efforts to promote flu vaccination this season, and our preparations for COVID vaccine distribution in 2021. Next slide, please. So this will be a familiar slide with some new data. This is our hospitalization data, and you can see our hospitalizations are trending slightly higher. As a reminder, spikes in hospitalizations tend to lag about two to three weeks behind any upticks in our cases. So we can, with the uptick in cases we're seeing, we wouldn't be surprised to see a further increase in COVID-related hospitalizations in the future. But it sounds like our hospitals are still in pretty good shape, and as you can see, even with the recent increase in hospitalizations, we're really nowhere close to where we were back in July and August with respect to hospitalizations. So still good news, but something that we're watching a little bit more closely. Next slide, please. So this slide shows our changes in real-time case rate per 100,000 residents, which, as you can see, has been going up for the last few weeks, and we'll talk more about this metric a little later in the presentation. Next slide. You can also see that our real-time testing positivity rate has been going up, but not to the same degree as our case rate. And as you can see, it remains much lower than it was back in the summer. And I might add, it's lower than overall, our overall California testing positivity rate, and California's testing positivity rate is much lower than most other states, many of them with testing positivity rate in the double digits. Next slide. This slide, just to remind you of the state's tier framework metrics and the associated metric ranges associated with each colored tier. Some of us are beginning to see this in our sleep. Purple is the most restrictive tier, and yellow is the least restrictive. Placer County is currently in the orange tier, which is the second least restrictive tier. As another reminder, the state assigns each county to a tier every Tuesday based on the seven-day lagged metric values that come from the state's data system. Tier assignment is based upon the least favorable metric. To move between tiers, a county must have metrics that justify a tier movement for two consecutive weeks. And for various technical reasons, these values can vary, sometimes fairly significantly, from the real-time metric values that are included in our local dashboards and reports. Next slide, please. So this slide looks at our Placer tier framework assignment. We actually recently learned that for this week, California Department of Public Health is postponing its release of the seven-day lag data for the week of October the 18th through the 24th and our associated tier assignment. So that's going to be postponed until tomorrow. So unfortunately, I don't have any updated state data to show you this morning. This slide just shows you our numbers that I shared verbally with you last Tuesday afternoon. But as a reminder, our case rate for October the 11th through 17th was 5.0 cases per 100,000. If you'll recall from the last slide, the case rate range for orange tier is 1 to 3.9, and so a case rate of 5.0 would put us into the red tier, where the case rate range is 4 to 7. And just for reference, with the increase in cases we're seeing over the last few weeks, the statewide case range now has increased to around nine cases per 100,000. While Placer's official numbers for October 18th to 24th will not be published until tomorrow, it's safe to say that we do not expect our case rate to go down based upon the uptick in cases we've been seeing locally, regionally, and even more significant national and international searches in cases we've been watching for the last few weeks. A second week with any metric in the red tier, which we are anticipating, would mean that Placer would have to move back to the red tier under the state's current tier framework. However, you'll recall that our testing positivity rate and our health equity testing positivity rate have been and remain much more favorable. Our testing positivity rate for October 11th through 17th was 2.5%. This was up a little, but still on the lower end of the orange tier range, which is 2 to 4.9%. It's still better than the state average of around 3.5%, and California's current testing positivity rate is, again, much better than that of most other states. I was encouraged to hear the governor's remarks at his Friday briefing in Valencia, where he and his team were opening up the new PerkinElmer lab, which is anticipated to add an additional 150,000 tests per day by early next year. While pointing out the importance of testing and controlling COVID, the governor made the point that increased identification of cases will come naturally with increased testing, and that, quote, "One should not be ashamed by identifying more cases." Encourage us to not focus as much on the total number of cases but on the positivity rate. Well, Placer County has been focused on our positivity rate and has made critical investments in testing. In a few minutes, Mike Romero will tell you more about all the great work we're doing here in Placer to make testing available to all residents of Placer County who want to be tested, and will ask you to approve a significant expansion of our contract with one of our contracted providers of testing, Stem Express. I'm confident that expanded testing is in the best interest of our residents, and it's the best way in the long run to contain this virus and continue the progress we've made towards safe reopening. However, in the short run, as this board has pointed out in the past, additional testing means that we will probably identify additional cases. Don't get me wrong, the increase in the case rate that threatens to push us back into the red tier is not due to an increase in testing. Our testing numbers have remained stable over the last few weeks, where we've seen an uptick in cases. However, it is true that given our low testing positivity rate, if we weren't doing quite as much testing as we've been doing, then potentially, we could have remained in the orange tier with a slightly higher testing positivity rate but a lower case rate. Again, I'm not recommending that we reduce our testing. Actually, I agree with the sentiment that with cases surging across the country, now is actually the time to improve our testing capacity and turnaround time. However, in Placer County's case, the state tier framework could be perceived as creating a disincentive to our doing, so doing more testing. I do not believe that's anyone's intent. It sounds like this administration wants us to focus more on the positivity rate, which I think makes a lot of sense. With a little more work, I think we could get our testing positivity rate back down below 2% here in Placer, which is consistent with the yellow tier. The governor has also talked a lot about the importance of focusing on health equity, on making sure that disadvantaged communities who we know are disproportionately impacted by COVID are not left behind. Well, last week, we shared with you some of the work we've been doing to make sure our most disadvantaged communities get the resources they need to stay healthy and resilient through this pandemic. I'm proud of the work we're doing in this area and proud to report that our health equity testing positivity metric is 2.7%, which is also closer to the yellow tier than it is to the red. If Placer County gets moved to the red tier with these numbers, it looks like we would be among the lowest testing positivity and the lowest health equity testing positivity rate in the state for any county assigned to the red tier. I'm not saying we may not need to eventually move into the red tier if the current trends continue. We are seeing an increase in cases and our testing positivity rate, and also increasing evidence that some in our community are letting down their guard. But I'm not sure that Placer's current numbers justify moving back to the red tier at this point. Therefore, today, I plan to notify the California Department of Public Health of my intent to apply for an adjudication of Placer County's tier assignment. Next slide, please. So what comes next? Today, we'll notify the state of our intent to submit a request for an adjudication of our tier assignment. Our actual request will not be due until Thursday. The California Department of Public Health may then accept or reject our adjudication request. We'll remain in the red tier, sorry, in the orange tier until we receive a response on our adjudication request. That could come as early as Friday, but no later than Tuesday of next week. If we're assigned back to the red tier... If we're assigned back to the red tier, it would mean that many sectors would have to reduce their indoor capacity, generally from 50% in orange down to 25% red. This would include retail, places of worship, restaurants, gyms, movie theaters, museums, et cetera. Some sectors, including card rooms, family entertainment centers, and wineries, would have to stop indoor operations, and others, including amusement parks, pro sports, and bars where no meals are provided, would have to close entirely. Obviously, this would be a heavy burden on sectors that are already struggling. Again, I plan to request adjudication of our tier assignment, and Placer County will remain in the orange tier until that adjudication is complete. However, it would probably be wise for us to prepare for a move back into the red tier within the next week and as early as this Friday. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so, I'd like to end with a much happier message. We have talked a lot about how Placer County HHS has great community partnerships. At no time in our memory has that been more important than during this pandemic. This morning, I'd like to highlight our partnership with our schools here in Placer, and the great benefits to our children and our whole community that this partnership is reaping. We've partnered with our schools on a wide range of issues, such as safe reopening guidance, case investigations, contact tracing, and three testing sites, one in South Placer, one in Mid Placer, and one in East Placer, that are dedicated to students and school staff. This has allowed students and school staff who are sick or exposed to someone who's sick to quickly get tested and get results. So far, we've not seen any evidence that in-person instruction is a major driver of community transmission. This is reassuring, as many of the remaining schools that have not had in-person instruction will be moving in this direction in the next few weeks. So, we want to publicly thank our students, our parents, our teachers, and other staff for all the work they've done in reopening our schools. And I especially want to thank our school principals, superintendents, and all the folks at Placer County Office of Education for all their hard work and collaboration to safely open our schools. Nice work, everyone. And with that, I'd like to bring down the slides, please, and hand off to Mike Romero, who will talk about our COVID testing resources, our efforts to promote flu vaccination, including county-run flu clinics, and our preparations for COVID vaccine distribution. Before I hand off, I want to publicly thank and embarrass Mike for all of his great service to our department and our community. Mike has been one of our rocks in HHS for many years, and especially during the last eight months with his work on our COVID response. I'm not just calling Mike a rock because he's a little hard-headed.
Ooh.
Yeah, I'm going to pay for that one. All right, Mike, it's yours.
Thanks, I guess, Rob. If someone could bring the slides back up. And go to the next slide, please. Okay, so, thanks for that, Rob. I'm going to describe the current COVID-19 testing landscape in Placer County, and I'll start with describing OptumServe. Since May 4th, Placer County has hosted two state-funded OptumServe specimen collection sites in Rockland, at the Placer County Library, and in Truckee on Donner Pass Road. You will recall that these sites had previously been in Roseville at The Grounds and in Kings Beach at the North Tahoe Event Center. The OptumServe sites are open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Appointments are made online. About 12 to 14 specimens are collected per hour. They're scheduled in five-minute increments. Currently, their turnaround time averages about two and a half days. That's longer than we'd all like. Forty-eight hours is really the goal, 24 hours is the want, so, right now, two and a half days is a little long. About 20% of the customers at the Optum Serve sites report, self-report as being symptomatic. I'd like to acknowledge David Adaway and his team, my friends, at The Grounds, and Lauren Holt, Lauren Holt and his team at the North Tahoe Event Center for initially launching these sites. I'd also like to acknowledge Mary George and her wonderful team of librarians with the Placer County Libraries, as well as Judy Nuland with the Tahoe Forest Hospital District for hosting and supporting the current Optum Serve sites. The Rockland sites will be closing on November 13th and moving to the Maidoo Activity Center in Roseville. So, much thanks to the city of Roseville for offering to host a site. So, what's next with Optum Serve? Well, we recently completed a survey with the California Department of Public Health in which we expressed interest in adding an additional Optum Serve site in Auburn, an additional lane in Truckee, and an additional lane in Roseville. This would provide an additional capacity of nearly 500 tests per day to Placer County. That would better serve South Placer, Mid Placer, and North Tahoe communities. We expect to meet with the state in the coming weeks to discuss this request. We don't really know the odds that the request will be approved. We don't know if the request will be based on tier status. We're going to learn more in the coming weeks and hopefully come back with good news. So, in addition to partnering with the state, Placer County HHS is partnering with the Placer County Office of Education and the Tahoe Truckee Unified School District in operating three specimen collection sites at the PCOE CV Center in Rockland, at the PCOE Annex Nobly Room in Auburn, and recently at the Ride Out Community Center in Tahoe City. These sites are currently open Monday through Friday, 8 to 12, and they can collect about 50 specimens per day per site. These sites, as Rob mentioned, as he stole my material, I mean, are open for school staff, teachers, and students who are symptomatic or who have been exposed to a confirmed positive case. The goal of these sites is to eliminate barriers to accessing testing, so that schools could initially open and then continue to remain open. The PCOE sites opened on September 21st, and the Tahoe Truckee Unified School District site opened just last week on October 29th. So, in addition to the Optum Serve and the school sites, thinking just about testing, healthcare providers continue to be the biggest source of testing, you know, Kaiser, Sutter, UC Davis, Chappa Day, just to name a few. So, they're providing the bulk of the testing in our community, as they should as healthcare providers. I'll mention also skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities test patients and their staff as well. So, what can we expect in the near future? The first, as, again, as Rob mentioned and stole from me, is that the state is partnering with PerkinElmer. They're now set up in Valencia, which is in Los Angeles County. PerkinElmer, they're anticipating the process up to 150,000 specimens per day, which really is a staggering number. The Optum Serve sites have begun to send their specimens to PerkinElmer as of Monday. The goal is results within 24 to 48 hours of receipt, and let's, and let's hope they're able to do that. That would make a big difference. We also understand that PerkinElmer will be able to test for COVID-19, flu, and RSV from a single specimen. That hasn't been approved yet, but that's very exciting. Hope that happens soon. The other thing that's new, that I don't have too much information about, but I'm sure people have read or heard about, is that the federal government has acquired 150 million rapid tests. These are U.S. FDA authorized antigen, rapid point-of-care tests that do not require an instrument for the testing. I heard it referred to as a toaster the other day. I don't know if that's Mike, if that's microbiology jokes, I don't, I don't get it. The results will be quick and inexpensive, but I don't have details on when they'll be available. It is very exciting. Inexpensive test that you can do without, without going to a healthcare provider could serve us all very well. If I could have the next slide, please. All right, so, looking ahead at a, the vaccine response to COVID-19. Currently, there are numerous pharmaceutical companies developing COVID-19 vaccines, and they're at various stages of clinical trials, as you've all seen in the news. The state has developed a vaccine acquisition and distribution plan under the assumption that vaccine will be available in phases based on the progress in production and distribution. I think that's a good assumption. The state's proposing loosely three phases. The first phase would be when there'd be initial limited vaccine quantities. That first phase would likely include healthcare workers who treat COVID-19 patients or who are likely to be exposed, other essential workers, first responders, and then, of course, people who are at higher risk of severe COVID-19 illness or mortality. The second phase would begin when larger quantities of vaccine are more available, and then it would gradually include the general population. The third phase would begin when vaccine is widely available and can treat COVID-19, much like we do flu vaccine. We anticipate pushing vaccine to healthcare providers who could treat COVID-19, much like we do flu vaccine today. And that's, that's exciting, right? That's something to look forward to is, is when that vaccine is so normal that we treat it like we do a seasonal flu vaccine. So, pushing vaccine to healthcare providers is a big deal, right? They're going to, they're going to serve their, their, their patients. But for us, you know, we're likely to conduct school-based and community-based vaccine clinics to make sure the vaccine's out there. We're also anticipating that the COVID-19 vaccine may require two doses over a given period, so that will be an additional challenge for us. Can I have the last slide, please? Okay, so, we are well-prepared and experienced to conduct vaccine clinics. We have an excellent immunization program and an exceptional team, an exceptional and experienced team. We've developed and fostered relationships with healthcare providers to improve their capacity, specifically for the proper storage and administration of vaccines. Just this flu season, we've, we've provided 3,300 flu doses to local healthcare providers. We also currently conduct back-to-school vaccine clinics to ensure kids can attend school. We've been doing this for a number of years, in particular, since our own medical clinics we closed down. We're still able to carry on that opportunity to provide students with back-to-school vaccine. I mean, that is vaccine that will allow them to attend school outside of a, sort of, the traditional medical clinic experience, something we've done the last few years that I'm quite proud of. And of course, we conducted the H1N1 vaccine campaign back in 2009 and 2010. At that time, we received 80,000 doses in the community, which sounded like a lot at the time, and we ourselves administered something about half of those doses in what was sometimes two school-based clinics a day for six weeks, if I remember correctly. And of course, we ran community-based clinics. I mention it because the lessons we learned from that campaign, while it was a decade ago now, some of us were, were part of the leadership team that planned and administered those clinics. So, we've learned those lessons. We know how to run big clinics utilizing staff and volunteers and partnering with the state. So, the COVID-19 vaccine campaign is going to be bigger and more challenging and more lengthy, but my message to the board and to the community is that HHS and public health specifically, that we're up to this challenge. So, with that, unless Dr. Oldham has additional comments, no, he's saying no, so, we'd be happy to address your questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the update. Let's see, we'll go with questions. Supervisor Yulver.
Thank you for the information. If we could, please, when you addressed the slide in regard to the state's tier framework, last time we were together up in Tahoe and had questions about this, you were, I think, going to inquire in regard to the health equity testing positivity component of this. You indicated that the health equity testing positivity component was something that would accelerate movement into a different tier. I asked the question, would, will it stop us from being moved back? Were we able to make that inquiry, and do we have an answer on that?
Not, not under the existing tier framework, and that's actually part of the reason for the request for adjudication, is under the adjudication, you could submit either kind of a data adjudication or look at qualitative and other contextual factors, and so, that's where we're going to request, and that actually, the state look at our relatively low health equity positivity rate, our overall positivity rate, and the fact that even, even though we have had an increase in hospitalizations, overall, our hospitalization rate is low, and what we didn't talk about today was contact tracing. And so, we continue to have a very robust team of people doing case investigation and contact tracing, and we have, continue to have capacity in that area. So, those are kind of all the different factors that will go into the request for adjudication. But for sure, the, I think, given this administration's emphasis on, both on health equity and on the importance of kind of testing and really emphasizing the testing positivity, we're hopeful that this will be a successful adjudication. I'm not, you know, no promises, right? But I think that that's sort of the reasoning behind why we're submitting.
All right, and then, assuming that the answer on the adjudication is no, and we get moved into the red, if we maintain in the orange on the health metric or the equity metric as well as positivity, do we then have the opportunity to be moved back up? If it doesn't keep us from falling back, but they remain in orange, do we then move back up?
Again, not, my understanding is not under the current, the way the tier framework is set up, and a team can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think, again, it would be an opportunity for adjudication. Now, if we had yellow data, you know, in the tier, either in the testing positivity or the health equity metric, then we could accelerate, but my understanding is that if it's, if we continue just to have orange, it wouldn't prevent us from moving back in this case, and it would, and once we're in the red, I don't think that it could accelerate us. But we could, again, apply, continue to apply for adjudication in the future as well.
So, Rob, help me understand something. If today, sitting here, we had both our case rate and our equity rate in the red, and we were red, and we moved our equity rate into the orange, would that then qualify us to move from the red to the orange?
No, because I think it'd be whatever kind of your worst of the metrics is, is how the tier assignment, in the current framework, is how you're assigned to a tier. So, if we had any metric in the red, we would still be in the red. I think, so, if, if our case rate were in the purple, and actually, this is, you know, when we look at the real-time data, you know, our case rate in many counties across California, that's where it looks like things are headed on the case rate. You know, I think if we had orange, continue to have orange health equity and test positivity rates at that point, it certainly, I think, would prevent us from, you know, certainly, you can accelerate, and other counties have accelerated from purple to red based on having orange testing positivity rate. So, I think we could do the same and certainly make the, I haven't heard that discussion yet, but I think we could make the case very strongly that we wouldn't move to purple if we had orange testing positivity or, and/or health equity metrics.
Okay. So, a few weeks ago, I was discussing the story in the New York Times in regard to the cycle threshold, and I asked some questions in regard to the cycle threshold. Here, we're seeing four out of five people who are testing positive don't have symptoms. What, did we ever determine what the cycle threshold is to which our tests are being administered?
Yeah, I think I'll let Mike answer that, but I'll say, in general, the cycle threshold, and what, what that, it's a threshold at which they're calling, you know, they're detecting virus, right?
Right.
And they're determining whether, the threshold at which that level of virus is, becomes kind of relevant for whatever the, you know, the thing is, you know, whether we're saying that someone is infected with COVID. And so, I think the distinction is, in all of these cases, they're finding virus particles and, and it's, I think, Mike, the answer is, it varies from test, from, you know, each testing vendor, what their cycle threshold is, and it's based on what the, you know, what they got approved. what they got approved through their regulatory authority, through the FDA. But Mike, can you shine additional light on that, please?
Sure. So the manufacturer, right, of the device is the one who sets the cycle threshold, not the actual laboratory who purchased the device. Stem Express specifically, as we'll discuss in our department item, uses a brand that the cycle threshold is 37, which is fair. Some of them, cycle threshold could be as high as 40, but I also know that there's, you know, there's some PCR machines that have lower cycle thresholds, maybe for other viruses, 35 or even lower. But through my research, I found that the device using by, used by Stem Express is at that 37.
Okay. And yet, in that very same article, and subsequently, even Fauci himself has said that a cycle threshold past 35 is irrelevant. So why do we continue to be subject to tests that, tests to a deeper cycle threshold, thereby giving us more positives than when we know those folks have some remnant but are not infectious and none of the epidemiologists seem to think that we should be testing to that level? I just, we're setting ourselves up to fail, just like if we expand testing and the state keeps this metric as one of their key metrics as opposed, I mean, we all think it's in the best interest of public health to have more testing, but if our positivity rate remains low, yet more testing, just because math works, will yield more cases per 100,000, we are literally setting ourselves up to fail by expanding our testing. And so why would we do that until we do get an answer back from the state as to this issue of the case rate per 100,000?
Yeah, and I'll say, on the, on the cycle threshold question, I mean, just a reminder, and actually, the fact that we have a low testing positivity rate kind of reinforces this, that most of the tests are coming back are negative, the vast majority. And so it's not like having, you know, and we don't have any control over, you know, what the various manufacturers, where they set the cycle threshold level, but that, you know, the, you know, the current cycle threshold that we have is still generating very low, low rates of testing positivity.
Correct.
But that is the concern, if it's set at a certain level, that you'll have some tests popping up positive for people who really don't have a lot of active virus that could potentially be, you know, make them infectious. But I don't think anyone's debating about, you know, if someone's coming up positive, regardless of the cycle threshold, they have been exposed, they have, they're actually shedding, shedding virus in their mucosa. I think the question is whether that's relevant to them spreading the virus on. I think it's, I think, a good question, and one, obviously, the science is evolving on this question. So we'll continue to ask, but I did want to kind of reinforce the point that most people, the vast majority of people who are getting tested are coming up, coming up negative. So the cycle threshold really is not impacting those folks. And so we think if we test more people, that, you know, more people will be negative, and that's sort of the idea, is to expand our testing capacity if we do so, that we should see a decrease in our testing positivity rate and in the health equity positivity rate as we target those certain disadvantaged communities. Mike, anything else you'd like to add on that?
You know, I still look at the test as a, right now, it's a yes/no test, which I think is good and bad. Is there a virus, right? It doesn't say, as a diagnostic tool, it doesn't say where you are in your infectious period. Is it in the beginning? Is that the end? And the cycles, that's the cycle threshold, if you have a big viral load, Rob, if I understand this correctly, right, fewer cycles are necessary?
Right.
A slider, you know, there'd be the more. So I think that there are some legitimate criticisms of the technology. I do think it's state-of-the-art right now, and like everything COVID, things change. As I talk to different groups, you know, are we going to be doing PCR testing in 2021? I'm not quite sure. We'll see how effective the rapid antigen tests are, but I think like everything else, it's a test that has context to it. But I understand Supervisor Yuler's point about the trouble, the trouble of the existing system.
Yeah, and I would just add, because I know we're going to talk more, we have a department item about the Stem Express contract, but, you know, I stole Mike's thunder about the PerkinElmer lab a little bit, but I think one of the value of sending, you know, all the counties sending to the same place is that we have standardization, at least their, you know, the samples are being processed in the same lab. Because one of the questions around, you know, the tier, the current tier assignment structure is, we are, you know, utilizing different tests, you know, across different counties, and so I think, you know, I anticipate many more of our samples over time as more testing capacity at the PerkinElmer lab comes online, that we'll be sending those. And we'll talk more about that. They're going to be at a much lower price as well, so the price involved in the Stem Express, I would be really surprised if we end up utilizing all of that if the PerkinElmer lab comes online as anticipated. But it does give us flexibility, and so I think there's value in us diversifying across different labs, so that if we do see a surge and really long, you know, kind of like we saw back in the summer, really long turnaround times and challenges getting in for appointments at our OptinServe site, that we have other options, especially for, to keep our schools and other critical infrastructure open. So that's, but I get it, that it's, in some ways, we're saying, you know, there's diversity in having different places where we're sending lab tests, and in the end, you know, eventually, we're, I think, it would be nice for them all to be processed through kind of the same lab with the same technology, but we're just not quite there yet.
Okay. And then finally, Rob, our four out of five of our positive tests being asymptomatic, is that consistent with what we're seeing as a general population, either in the state or nationally? Do we have any idea what the asymptomatic testing rate is?
I don't think we have that. Mike, you don't know, do you? Yeah, we'll try to get that back, maybe even on the next board item, we'll try to get that information till you do a little bit of research. But I think my gut is that it's consistent, because, you know, most of the spread of this virus is through people who are asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, and so that's my gut, but we'll research that and try to get, see if we can get you answers even today.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Gosselin.
Hey. Well, I'll try not to take quite as long and not repeat any of those questions. First off, Dr. Oldham and Mike, I just want to thank you again. We can't thank you enough for all the work you've been doing in this area, and I especially want to thank you for considering an adjudication appeal to the state. First time I've heard that there is a process by which we could do that. Do you know how many counties have benefited from such an adjudication appeal?
I know there've been a few counties that have submitted adjudications. I don't, I think maybe one has been successful for a short period of time, but I think it's, you know, for the most part, they have not been successful, but I'm aware of, and we'll also, we'll also see if we can get that data for you. Sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but...
Yeah. Well, I'm not trying to stump you, just trying to see, I am just so pleased you're doing that and, and at least bringing forward this whole concept that we're doing the right thing and we need to be rewarded for all the efforts we're putting in on testing and encouraging people and our health equity matrix. I'm so impressed with all the work all of you have done on that. Can you tell us anything on the sources of increased infection that we're seeing from what's causing our jumping cases? I know it's happening nationwide, but specifically in Placer County?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the question, because I think we're a little different, so in some of the surrounding counties, you've seen information about large outbreaks. Well, it doesn't seem, you know, at skilled nursing facilities and other places, it doesn't seem like our growth in cases are really related to any large outbreak. So we haven't had large outbreaks in schools. Actually, our skilled nursing facilities, our other congregate living facilities, like our jails, have kind of gotten over most of the large outbreaks. Not to say that they, we couldn't have another one again, you know, knock on wood, but it's been, you know, a lot of household transmission. So I mentioned at our last board meeting, you know, a growth in the number of cases when we do an investigation of people who are saying that they were, that they attended a large gathering. So that's, and right now, you know, I think 16% was the last number for October that I saw, who, of the people who were doing a contact investigation, are attending a large gathering, but that's not to say that the other 84 didn't attend a large gathering, right? So that, there may be, you know, people who don't recall or don't feel comfortable sharing that information. So 37% reported having close contact to a confirmed case. I mentioned the 16% reported having attended a large gathering, and then 47% of cases were part of a household with more than one case. So really, almost the majority of our cases that we're seeing are because they were exposed to someone in the household.
Okay. And, you know, thus the challenge with shutting down businesses, and can we do more to control spread in those and not have to get to this point of shutting back down some of our businesses? I did have a couple of questions from Mayor Berlant in Auburn. One is, on the adjudication, would letters from our city governments or support from our city governments at all assist in that process? Is there a place for that in your appeal?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that that would be, I mean, I guess it couldn't hurt, but, you know, I can't really speak to, I know that the people who do the adjudication is mainly looking at the data and the case, and I think it's also a pretty quick turnaround time, so I don't think we're asking for those letters, but, you know, I imagine they couldn't hurt.
Okay. And then, has there been any new guidance on tenting? If we do go back into the red, obviously, there's concern about having some siding on the tents and heating in the tents. Is there additional guidance coming from the state on those so that people can try to remain at some sort of 50% numbers moving forward?
I'm sorry, I just, my audio cut out. This was, can you repeat the question?
Guidance on tenting, outside tenting for keeping businesses open outdoors, has there been any new guidance on siding or heating for tent structures?
No, I haven't seen that. Mike is shaking his head no, too, so it sounds like the answer's no.
Okay. And my final question is more, and maybe, I'm not sure how aware you are, Todd might answer it, on the serology study, our timing on that, how things are going on that, as far as how many residents have been contacted? Are we getting a pretty good response from those residents? And are they being contacted by mail or by phone call?
I don't know. Rob, you want to, I know you've been on a couple of these calls. I do know there's been mailers that were sent out on the 15th of October and the 25th, 5,000 mailers, the first go-around, and we did a subsequent mailing, Stanford did, on the 25th. I know the first respondents, we had over 200 respondents to the mailer, and they also requested two or more individuals in their household be tested. So we're looking at a sample size of, believe, Rob, you can affirm this, 2,000 folks that are looking on the seroprevalence testing. Our intent is, as part of the contractual agreement, Dr. Parsonett actually would be coming and speaking to you midway through this test as well, and that is scheduled for the 15th of December, so there'll be an update to you all then. Rob, you have anything else to add to it? I know you're on the weekly...
No. Yeah, no, I think you, you, you're correct, so it's, we're, the target, I think, it's not like we're on target to meet the 2,000, the goal, and from Dr. Parsonett, it sounds like we have a nice mix kind of geographically. The, I think they'll be trying to oversample certain communities, so there'll probably be another round of mailers that go out trying to target some communities that aren't getting adequate responses. So I would, I guess, encourage residents that if you, you know, get it, especially a mailer in the future, that probably means that you're in a community that wasn't, you know, we haven't gotten enough responses, so just encourage people to participate. You have to, what happens is they'll send in the mailer, you commit to how many people in your household you want to give, and actually, it's a finger prick, so you, and put your blood on a little card and mail it in. So I've done it, it, you know, takes five minutes, it's just a little, you know, stick to the finger and a little bit of bleeding, and then it's all over, but I think the data will potentially be helpful in the future for us.
Great. That was the end of my questions, too. Thank you again. We can't thank you all enough for all the hard work.
All right. We'll go ahead and move to public comment, if there are any comments from the public on this item. Looks like nobody in the room. Anybody on Zoom, Megan?
There are no, no one's on Zoom.
All right. Dr. Oldham, thank you very much for the update. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate, appreciate your work and keep us posted.
We'll do, thank you.
Especially on the adjudication. We appreciate that. All right. We're going to move to our 11:00 AM timed item. County Council, you've got something?
Yes, I believe we're going to take...
Oh, that's right. We're not done. 11A, sorry, we went longer than I anticipated. So we have 11A, it's agreements for laboratory testing for COVID-19. Dr. Oldham or Mike, you need to take that item.
Sure. So that'll be me. Again, Mike Romero, a program manager in the HHS Public Health Division. The action requested today, we're requesting that you approve an amendment to an agreement with Stem Express for laboratory testing for COVID-19, an increased amount of $1.35 million for a new maximum amount of $2 million, and extend the agreement through June 30th of 2021, and of course, authorize the purchasing manager to sign all required documents, including subsequent amendments for $100,000. As you know, HHS has coordinated specimen collection and laboratory testing primarily in response to outbreaks among vulnerable populations in congregate settings, including skilled nursing facilities, assisted living facilities, residential care facilities for the elderly and Placer County jails. HHS has been utilizing free laboratory services provided by the University of California, San Francisco, for up to 100 samples per day. HHS has also utilized the Sacramento County Public Health Laboratory for COVID-19 testing. However, as you can imagine, this lab is challenged by the demands of testing within its own county, as well as the support it provides for the region. Procurements originally awarded a contract to Stem Express in the amount of $100,000 for the period of June 19th through the 31st of 2020. Subsequently, your board has approved an increase to the contract on two occasions, most recently on September 22nd, bringing the current total to $650,000. On October 20th, HHS was notified that UC San Francisco will no longer provide free testing, effective on Halloween. This was a value of up to $70,000 per week in testing. So we need an alternative, and as you know, HHS enjoys a strong partnership with Stem Express for COVID-19 testing. Stem Express has recently developed the ability to bill individuals' insurance plans for COVID testing. Stem Express will charge the county for testing, bill insurance companies, and then reimburse us when the insurance companies pay the claims. Increasing the current Stem Express contract by $1.35 million to a total of $2 million will allow HHS to continue to coordinate specimen collection and laboratory testing in response to outbreaks among vulnerable populations in congregate settings, first responders and others. It will also allow us to continue to partner with the Placer County Office of Education and the Tahoe Truck Unified School District to reduce barriers to COVID-19 testing and increase opportunities for schools to remain open. The total, the total cost of this amendment is anticipated to be covered by CARES funding. Admittedly, an unknown percentage will be reimbursed through insurance claims. And so that, with that, I would be happy to answer your question.
Thank you, Mike. Looks like there are no questions. Oh, yes, there, Supervisor Yuler.
Yeah, just, if you could, one more time, help me understand why it's in our interest to maintain or expand testing until we know if the state is going to hang on to that particular item and use it as they have inconsistently against us, moving us back.
I think, I think Dr. Oldham might be the better person to respond to that, Rob.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's in our best interest from a public health perspective, without a doubt, and I think the answer is, I mean, the question is, what about from kind of our, in the tier framework, in the tier assignment? And I think that's up for, up for debate... think that's up for, up for debate about whether, again, I think in the long run, by testing, that we have the best chance of advancing, and certainly to, you know, having, our strength is our low testing positivity and our health equity metric. And I think if we continue to advance testing, that those, those metrics can improve. But I also see, you know, across the, you know, to me, across the state, other, other counties are going to have much higher case rates than, than we are. So I appreciate the question. I don't think we can predict what the future will hold as far as the, you know, the tier, the tier framework, and whether it will hold in its current state. I think if we, if it stays in the current state, probably lots of counties are moving to purple really soon. And so, you know, regardless of how much testing we're doing, and so then I think we have to go back to what, what is it that we think is best for, you know, just, you know, the control of the virus. But I, but I appreciate it's a, it's a challenging kind of policy question. And the timing of this request, given the adjudication, is complicated.
Thank you.
And I would just want to clarify. So part of this testing is also for our schools, correct? We are providing this testing for the schools that
That's correct.
have to make sure that staff, teachers, students don't, are tested if somebody does have a symptom. So I think that's an important point to note.
Yeah, and I think, as Mike pointed out, I think the majority of our testing, you know, Stem Express is a relatively small percentage of our overall testing. And, but what this contract does is gives us a lot of flexibility. So yes, for our, our schools, but also for other, you know, if we have people, you know, who are part of our, you know, critical infrastructure, or law enforcement, et cetera, if they need quick testing with quick turnaround times, it gives us the flexibility to get that, to get that testing. Again, we're, our intent is to not use the full extent of the contract. We appreciate the flexibility if we have to. But particularly if we get additional expansion through other routes, like through the PerkinElmer, our, our intent is to try to minimize the amount of utilization of this contract.
Thank you. We'll open this up to the public, if there are any comments either in person or on Zoom on this item. All right, we don't see any, and we'll bring it back to our board.
Motion approval.
Motion by Supervisor Gustafson, and second by Supervisor Yular. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move on to item eight, which is the third-party appeal, Placer Vehicle Inspection Center Minor Use Permit and Design Review Agreement. Good afternoon, or, no, good morning, Callie.
Good morning.
Can't look at that flock.
Before I begin, I would like to ensure that the appellant is on the line. Wonderful.
All right, great.
Thank you. All right. Well, good morning, Supervisors. Chairwoman Gore, my name is Callie Kedinger Cecil with the Planning Services Division. The item before you this morning is a third-party appeal of a previously approved minor use permit and design review agreement for the Placer Vehicle Inspection Center project. For the purposes of the presentation, I will be referring to this project as the Placer VIC. The project is located in the unincorporated area of Rockland. It is west of Highway 65, south of Athens Avenue, and north of West Sunset Boulevard. It is located within the Sunset Area Plan. The project site is shown outlined in red, and the land use designation is light industrial. The Placer Ranch Pacific Plan is located immediately adjacent to the west. The zoning of the site is light industrial combining design corridor. Parcels to the north are zoned entertainment mixed use, to the south, business professional, and to the west, Placer Ranch Pacific Plan. The parcels adjacent to the east are under the same zoning designation as the subject parcel. The existing conditions of the site are undeveloped. The site is approximately 130 acres and is characterized by flat to gently rolling terrain. It supports a mix of native and non-native grassland and rudder-oral vegetation. Wetland and riparian habitats are supported on-site, primarily within the southern portion. These slides and the following slide demonstrate the existing conditions of the site. These two photos were taken from West Sunset Boulevard looking north and showed the existing grassland habitat, as well as the unnamed tributary to Pleasant Grove Creek that occurs in the southern portion of the parcel. These two photos are taken from Athens Avenue looking southeast, and from Cincinnati Avenue looking north. Again, these photos are demonstrating the existing undeveloped condition of the site. The project proposes a minor use permit and design review agreement for the construction and operation of a vehicle storage and distribution center for a nationwide retailer named Carvana LLC. The facility would be used to receive, inspect, store, conduct minor repairs, and distribute vehicles to and from customers. The building, the 190,000 square foot inspection building would be located at the north central portion of the site, and there would be storage for approximately 10,490 vehicles. Employee and visitor parking is located in the northeast corner, and there are detention basins located at the south, or at the north and southern portions. The alignment of Placer Parkway crosses the northwest corner of the parcel. Approximately 850 people would ultimately be employed at the facility. The facility would be accessed via two separate entrances from Cincinnati Avenue. The facility would not be open to the public and would not contain a retail showroom. This slide and the following slide demonstrate renderings of the project, and while these are not site-specific to the Sunset Area Plan site, they do demonstrate what the overall aesthetics of the site would be. The buildings would all be gray prefabricated metal with standing seam roofs, black trim, and steel roll-up doors. Again, this is demonstrating what the building would look like. A design review agreement was prepared for this project and is included with staff's report as attachment E. The preliminary landscape plan prepared for the project demonstrates that the project would be consistent with the water-efficient landscape ordinance. It also demonstrates that the perimeter would be fenced and landscaped. For the project's sequo requirement, a conformity checklist was prepared for the project in accordance with CEQA Guidelines Section 15183 for streamlined environmental review. The checklist that was prepared demonstrates that the project is consistent with the Sunset Area Plan, which was adopted in December 2019. The purpose of the checklist was to demonstrate the project's consistency and identify if the project would result in any new or previously unidentified impacts. Studies and reports were prepared for the project to support the analysis, including an air quality, greenhouse gas emissions report, a traffic memo, a preliminary drainage report, a bio report, cultural resources report, and a sewer technical memorandum, and a drainage report. The checklist demonstrates that the proposed project would be consistent with the SAP and identifies all of the different mitigation measures and policies that the program is subject to. The project's minor use permit and design review agreement were initially approved by the zoning administrator on July 16th, 2020. At that hearing, the zoning administrator considered staff's report and public comments, which included concerns regarding biological impacts, drainage impacts, and public review of the project. The zoning administrator determined that the project complies with the Sunset Area Plan and would not result in new or more significant impacts than those previously analyzed. An appeal of the zoning administrator's decision was received on July 27th, 2020, from Michael Garabedian on behalf of Placer County Tomorrow. On September 10th, 2020, staff presented the appeal before the planning commission, and the planning commission considered the appeal in public comment. Concerns raised at that hearing included the size and scale of the project, as well as impacts to vernal pool habitats, comments that the programmatic level SAP EIR is insufficient for this project, that the SAP is under litigation, and that there are impacts to biological resources, drainage, and carbon sequestration of grassland. The planning commission considered these points and voted to unanimously deny the appeal and uphold the initial approval. On September 21st, 2020, a third-party appeal was again filed from Michael Garabedian on behalf of Placer County Tomorrow. The appeal letter contained multiple allegations that were discussed in previous letters, but to summarize those points, the appeal letter asserted that the project cannot be constructed without impacts to wetlands and vernal pool habitats, that the Sunset Area Plan EIR is insufficient for the proposed project, that public involvement has been lacking, that the county is devaluing ecosystem services, that wetland creation is subpar compared to maintaining existing wetland habitat, that a traffic study is required for the project, and that the staff report had no discussion of a traffic study, that drainage and stormwater runoff associated with the project is inadequate, and that the project is not minor and a CEQA analysis is required. In response, staff notes that a biological resources assessment was prepared for the project that identifies the project's impacts to biological resources. These impacts were anticipated in the Sunset Area Plan EIR, which determined that implementation of the area plan would have a significant unavoidable impact to wetlands. The project is required to mitigate for these impacts either through participation in the Placer County Conservation Program, through payment of in lieu fees, or through private mitigation banks. With regard to the assertion that the SAP EIR is insufficient, the checklist prepared for the project contains a very detailed analysis and outlines every applicable policy and mitigation measure that the project is subject to. The purpose of the checklist was to demonstrate how the Sunset Area Plan EIR addresses these effects, and this has been done for each resource area as required by CEQA. The appellant asserts that public involvement has been insufficient for both the Placer VIC project, as well as the Placer Gold Industrial Park, which is located immediately adjacent to the east. The Placer Gold Industrial Park Conditional Use Permit was approved by the Planning Commission in July 2016, and a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for that project. A 30-day public review period did occur for that MND, and a modification to the Placer Gold Industrial Park Conditional Use Permit was approved by the Planning Commission in November 2019. Public hearing notifications were mailed out for all of these hearings, including for all hearings conducted for the Placer VIC project. The public had opportunities for involvement and comment. The appellate asserts the county is devaluing ecosystem services, and that creation of wetlands is subpar compared to maintaining existing wetlands. The county recognizes the inherent value of the various diverse habitats that are found throughout the county, as evidenced by numerous policies within the county's general plan for the restoration, protection, and enhancement of habitat, and also establishes land use buffers to, to protect sensitive resources. The recent adoption of the Placer County Conservation Program further demonstrates the county's commitment to the restoration and protection of biological resources. The appellate does not provide specific information regarding the failure or inadequacy of habitat creation. And off-site habitat creation and restoration is a commonly associated form of mitigation. In regards to the assertion that a traffic study is required, a traffic study was prepared for the project and was conducted by Kimberly Horn dated May 2020. It is included with staff's report as attachment I. Section 17 of the environmental checklist also analyzed transportation and traffic, and contains a detailed discussion of the project's impacts, as well as consistency with the SAP EIR traffic analysis. This slide is showing what the daily trip generation would be for the project, and notes that the project would generate 2,492 new daily trips. This information was included in previous staff reports, including pages seven and nine of the staff report prepared for the zoning administrator hearing. A letter from Caltrans was received prior to the zoning administrator hearing regarding a vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, analysis. As of July 1st of this year, VMT replaced level of service as a traffic evaluation metric. The traffic study did not include a VMT analysis, though pages 93 through 95 of the environmental conformity checklist does discuss VMT, and also discusses how this project's VMT is in relation to that evaluated in the SAP EIR. The checklist concluded that the, that the project would not be exceeding the VMT that was identified in the SAP EIR, and it should also be noted that the Office of Planning and Research Guidance for VMT evaluation is focused on light cars and trucks, and therefore VMT associated with the project is limited to those vehicle types. The project is required to comply with the Sunset Area Plan mitigation measures for traffic impact fees, and is also required to comply with the county's trip reduction ordinance, and must also prepare a transportation demand management plan. This is all to demonstrate that traffic has been analyzed for this project. Regarding drainage, the Sunset Area Plan requires that all new development mitigate increases in stormwater to retain a 100-year, eight-day storm design depth of 10 and seven, 10 inches, 10.75 inches, sorry, which is required due to the recurring downstream flooding concerns in neighboring jurisdictions. A drainage report was prepared for the project and concluded that the proposed drainage basins meet or exceed the requirements of the county's stormwater management manual. The project's conditions of approval include 17 different conditions that are related to stormwater treatment and collection and drainage, including but not limited to installing external grease, sand, and oil interceptors. The appellate does not provide specific details how these conditions in the site's required drainage improvements are insufficient. So what this map is showing is the existing hydrology, and these are showing how water would be treated on-site post-construction. The appellate asserts that the project is not minor and requires a CEQA analysis. The term minor in the word minor use permit is not meant to reflect the size and scale of a project, but rather to, to reflect the potential land use conflicts associated with a particular project, respective to its underlying zone district and adjacent zoning and uses. The proposed use of the site is vehicle storage and distribution, which is allowed in the light industrial zone district with approval of a minor use permit. A CEQA analysis was conducted per CEQA Guidelines Section 15183. This checklist was prepared to demonstrate consistency with the Sunset Plan, Sunset Area Plan EIR, and is a detailed document supported by a number of studies and reports. The Sunset Area Plan EIR anticipated large-scale projects to be developed on the various habitat types found throughout the site. Eight public comment letters have been received prior to the hearing. Four of the letters are from the appellate. One letter is from Leslie Warren with the Alliance for Environmental Leadership. One is from Larissa Berry with Defend Granite Bay, and two members of the public. The four additional letters from the appellate repeat the concerns about stormwater runoff and impacts to biological resources discussed in earlier letters, and requested the item be pulled from the agenda due to the hearing occurring on Election Day. The fourth letter received discussed concerns regarding, regarding the hearing date, the lack of a MAC meeting, requesting that additional time is needed to consider the project's impacts, including stormwater runoff to salmon, and that the staff report does not address municipal or auto dealer impacts. In response, staff notes that drainage and stormwater runoff have been adequately analyzed, and that it is not uncommon to hold hearings on election days. Municipal Advisory Committee, or MAC, meetings are held for projects where the planning commission has the original jurisdiction. Should be noted that this particular entitlement for a minor use permit is within the original jurisdiction of the zoning administrator, therefore, there is no requirement to go before the MAC. Having said that, it is also important to note that there is no MAC within the Sunset Area Plan boundaries. In regards to municipal concerns, staff notes that legal notices were sent to the various cities that have jurisdiction in the area, and that the checklist and the staff report thoroughly discuss the project's impacts. Finally, the distribution center does not have a retail showroom. The letters from Defend Granite Bay and the Association of Environmental Leadership and Cheryl Burkema contain multiple assertions about the, about the applicant's business practices in the county's review of the project and effects on the environment. Though the board may consider such information, an applicant's business, business practices or their legal issues, unless directly related to the violation of an applicable county code, are not part of the land use review process. Staff review of applications typically consists of applicability and compliance with the zoning ordinance, environmental review ordinance, community and specific plans, the county's general plan, and CEQA guidelines. The comments regarding the county's review of the project include that the project's impacts related to stormwater runoff, runoff from hazardous materials from vehicle inspections, VMT, housing, and air quality are insignificant and require further review. The letters request the item be postponed until further analysis has been conducted and any outstanding legal issues resolved. Staff notes that stormwater runoff has been adequately reviewed. The project is constructing drainage basins, is required to install external grease, oil, and sand separators, and is required to comply with, with applicable state permits. Furthermore, Condition of Approval Number 92 specifically prohibits the discharge of hazardous materials, including fuels, oils, and detergents, to the ground or drainage ways. The project's conformity checklist concluded that the VMT generated from the project would not exceed the estimate, the estimated Sunset Area Plan EIR VMT. The employment base is expected to be from the existing population, therefore, housing is not expected to be impacted. Air quality impacts related to the project are disclosed, and the project is required to mitigate air quality impacts through mitigation fee programs. The Sunset Area Plan EIR concluded that air quality impacts would be a significant and unavoidable effect, and the Placer VIC checklist notes that no element of the proposed project would change the conclusion of the Sunset Area Plan EIR, or result in new or substantially more severe impacts. None of the information provided in the comment letters provide information that was not previously analyzed, nor does the material provided demonstrate the need for further analysis. Thus, staff recommends that the board deny the third-party appeal filed by Michael Garabedian of Placer County Tomorrow, determine the potential impacts of the Placer VIC are within the scope of the analysis are within the scope of the analysis of the 2019 certified Sunset Area Plan, Plaza Ranch Specific Plan EIR pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15183, uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the Minor Use Permit subject to the conditions contained in the staff report, and finally, uphold the Planning Commission's approval of a design review agreement. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. I also understand that the applicant is available for a presentation, and Cedar's staff is also available. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go ahead, and we'll take a couple of questions before we go to the applicant supervisor, actually, Wiegand, since it's your district, we'll start with you.
Great presentation, Kelly. Appreciate it. Just want to, for the public, and just to get it on the record, let you have a chance to bounce my questions off of the podium, I guess. So the first policy filter for the Sunset Area, which was originally approved as a plan in 1997 and just recently updated, as you mentioned, was to set aside a place that would not provide for encroachment of mixed-use traditional development, but in fact, a place for creating jobs, good, quality-paying jobs. Do you agree with that?
I agree. Yes, that's correct.
And so when we just completed the update, we wanted to incentivize that, in my view, and thereby did a huge amount of planning that would not necessarily be required, but in fact, also included exhaustive review of the environmental documents so that applicants could be incentivized to plug into that so that the process would be more friendly and more cost-effective. Do you agree with that?
I do agree with that streamlined process that you've described, yes.
And then, obviously, we also recently, very recently, adopted the Placer County Conservation Plan that went through 20 years of review and public hearings and conversations and dialogue and also environmental review. And my position is that the first policy filter of that was, in fact, to not do traditional preservation mitigation of sensitive habitat, regulated habitat, in and amongst development, but rather to have that occur out in an area that would be remaining open space in perpetuity so that the habitat would function in a more healthy manner. So that, in fact, what's incentivized in the Sunset Area is, in fact, that we maximize the development within it and maximize the mitigation in a place where that conservation would exist in a more healthy manner. Do you agree with that?
I do, yes.
And obviously, we've heard and continue to see a lot of complaints about those plans not being adequate enough for some individuals, but in fact, I would argue that in Placer County, the review of all of that is probably unprecedented as compared to any other jurisdiction that I can manage. Do you agree with that?
I do, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Wiegand. Supervisor Yuler.
Yeah, question. So page 48 of our packet begins a document that I believe was submitted by Mr. Garabedian. Is that correct? This was submitted by him?
The appeals were submitted by Michael Garabedian, yes.
And identified appellant, Placer County Tomorrow. So my question for council is, what's the standing requirement for an appellate? Does the organization actually have to exist? Because the search of the Secretary of State's site and the IRS site finds no entity registered anywhere called Placer County Tomorrow. And so, since they identified the appellate as Placer County Tomorrow, and yet, Placer County Tomorrow doesn't exist, I'm just wondering how we establish standing in something like this?
In the land use CEQA world, the standard is not as strict. There's often loose groups that come together as interested parties on a land use CEQA matter and file appeals. We see it all the time, actually, with petitioners in CEQA cases, where an entity that didn't frankly exist before they filed the petition and wasn't even one of the individuals speaking, but a member of that group did speak, that individual and group then has standing to sue. So because of that, because it is such a broad range of standing in this particular venue, this can go forward, and if I'm not mistaken, the appellate is listed as Michael Garabedian on behalf of. So we have an individual and a group. So Mr. Garabedian on his own would have standing. If he can identify who these members are, then that group does. My guess is he's part of the group, so there you have somebody that's part of the group that can file an appeal and this sort of thing.
Okay. So the group doesn't, it doesn't have to be an established, like, I know the Defend Granite Bay group is an established nonprofit. They actually went through the process of recording and all the rest, but and the no records anywhere on the California Secretary of State site or the IRS site, that there is such an organization called Placer County Tomorrow. So if I tomorrow decided that I was Placer County yesterday, I could show up and call myself Placer County yesterday?
You certainly could. What you do without a specific case-
All right. I just didn't know if that was, if there was any. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
You may now know what Supervisor Yuler's plans are after January. All right. Thank you. No more questions from our board, but we do have the appellate on Zoom. So Mr. Garabedian, you are there, we'll bring you, so you can bring some comments. I would ask that you would limit your comments to 10 to 15 minutes at the most, please, so that we're happy to hear your comments. So please go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I hope I'm being heard now?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Yes. I'd like 10 minutes now. I don't think I will use the whole time now. And then, before the closing of the hearing, another up to 10 minutes, basically, the time you suggested split in two, if I may.
Well, let's start with 10 minutes, and then we can give you a follow-up five minutes, a little bit longer if needed at the end. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm here for Placer County Tomorrow and Unincorporated Association, as I think many are. This appeal asks three main questions. When will Placer County say no to big development by billionaires that destroys our natural resources? Second, when will we stop allowing-
Hey, Michael, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Can you turn off your audio? We can hear the, not your audio as you're speaking, but the board hearing in the background, I can hear it in the background. Does that make sense?
Yes, I've heard that the whole time. I don't know what it is. It's not on my end.
Maybe, make sure everybody else is on, everyone else is muted. Okay. All right.
Mr. Garabedian, do you have the board meeting open in another window, possibly through, like, the Granicus live feed or YouTube live feed?
No, no. I've only tuned in on Zoom. So I've heard, I've been having to listen to that the whole time, just like you are. I don't know where it's coming from. It's not here. In fact, what you can hear is, it does sound like the supervisors' meeting.
Hey, Michael, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Can you turn off- Yeah. The problem is, is that we are hearing what I have just, what I spoke about a minute ago. So there's about a minute delay, and we're hearing it come through on your audio feed. So is there?
Well, let me check to see. I don't know what else there might be, frankly.
Mr. Garabedian, do you have the- Okay. So it sounds like you've got two windows open. Maybe what we can do instead, if we can call you on the phone, Michael, that would be better. Otherwise, we're going to hear this feedback the entire time, and I want to make sure you have the time to be heard. So can we call you on the telephone? Let's do this. So I'll have you, Macon's going to call you right now on the telephone, and then we'll take it that way, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah. The problem is that we are hearing- You can mute Zoom on the other end. COVID. All right, Michael. Hopefully, you will answer the phone.
All right, Michael, are you there?
There we go. Good.
Okay. Are you there?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Go ahead. Except we're still got feedback. So you're going to have to, Michael, shut down your computer and just talk on the telephone, because otherwise, we still hear the feedback. Or shut down the Zoom call. Turn off your Zoom, if you would, and we'll just talk to you over the telephone. Okay. So now, Michael, speak to us on the phone.
Well, I've lost both the picture, but I assume you can hear me.
Yes, that is much better. Thank you.
No, this is okay. I don't have any visual presentation. So this appeal asks the three questions I talk about, about saying no to development that destroys our natural resources, first of all. Second, when will we stop allowing this destruction and people to pay fees in lieu of habitat destruction? Couldn't disagree more with destroying habitat to allow it elsewhere at a distance. And third, will staff start acting like planners for our communities instead of advocates for development? The piece you just heard is obviously advocacy. It is not an objective presentation. There's no map of the delineated wetlands of the marsh. There's no map of the bernal pools and the affected resources. They somehow skipped that, and it seems like an obvious case of advocacy and not objective presentation that you need to know. Another reason this should be continued. So the focus here, we're focusing on the urban runoff created by this project that could harm endangered steelhead with urban runoff contaminants with what is called Urban Runoff Mortality Syndrome. That's Urban Runoff Mortality Syndrome that can mobilize and wipe out salmon and tritic sound in the Portland area. In our case, has been demonstrated, that's being researched, to have some impact on our steelhead. We're waiting for that final, that research. So the county should say to this big project, no, you will not be allowed to pay to destroy our wetlands and bernal pool prairies so we can take your fees and construct artificial wetlands and bernal pools elsewhere. Efforts to make new wet areas to replace new ones, and this could be as much as 29% of the effort. They replace areas that took tens of thousands of years to make. It's an experiment in wasting funds, the developers' funds and our money. Nature has been building on our valley wetlands for perhaps up to one and a half million years. That was when the inland sea dried up that was here from 80 million years ago, but we're not out of it yet. Flood filling the 300-mile-long valley, 1860 to 61, was from a 45-day storm that could happen again. Now, when the pioneers came, they found a valley of widespread wetlands and regular flooding finally came to a significance to extent by levees and balsam reservoirs. So except for the remaining wet areas, that is, the zoning administrator and Planning Commission and its staff have approved paving it over as Supervisor Wiegand advocates. So here we are on Election Day, a day absolutely not of our choosing, seeking to maintain the following valuable ecosystem services from wetlands and bernal pool prairie land. Habitat for wildlife, including fish. Cleansing of water for wildlife and for us and downstream, including water cycling. Food for us and since time immemorial for indigenous people. Carbon sequestration by wet areas, and in particular, by native grasslands that can sequester. Research is showing can sequester more carbon than forests. They do nutrient cycling. They do soil formation retention, production of atmospheric oxygen. These ecosystem services are essential for the production of all others that support us and nature. So let's not be going back, as is advocated to you before 1891, when government policy was that wetlands are worthless, having value only to be drained, filed, and developed. Now, we need the staff and Carvana and the zoning administrator, because that's what we're doing. We're dealing with the zoning administrator's decision here to respect and defend our few remaining wetlands. The last century, in the last century, California has lost more than 90% of the estimated 4 million acres of wetlands that once spread across the state. Wake up, Placer County. The presenter at an environmental presentation on South County noted that bernal pools are everywhere here. So let's respect them and the fish and the wildlife they support, including downstream waters that support our salmon and steelhead. So we hope you would get the staff back to the joint boards to present all of the discretion you have, as if you had no discretion to do anything else. They're not presenting you the things you could do to exercise planning discretion. So this appeals really an opportunity for the staff to do that instead of the administrators, zoning administrators, incomplete and inadequate actions. Not to mention the going, having a chance to go before a municipal advisory council, which has happened in some cases since Carvana. One or two have met. So this board and the public need to know about your opportunities, and this appeal is to oppose what's before you and look for a new day. As I point out, you did not get from the staff the maps of what is being sacrificed, what you would like, what the zoning administrator would like you to sacrifice. You really need something that's objective. Now, it's really up to you to be able to exercise your discretion to know what your options are here. The only way anything else is going to happen is for you to demand what you need to do to be able to actually consider and know what the alternative is to not allow the spending of money to try to create new, protect already protected areas or to build new wetlands, which could be as much as 29% of what happened, 29% of the wetland destruction in this area and the whole area could require replacement. So this is really compatible, this is not compatible with what we think you should be doing. This development is really a kind of clarion call because once you see the map and see what's happening and see the alternatives, it brings really a difficult, puts you in a difficult position that does not favor respect for the area. So I think with that, I will look forward to addressing more points before the meeting closes, before the hearing, public hearing is over.
Thank you very much, Michael, and thank you for being flexible with the call-in. So I don't have any current questions. We will, if the applicant would like to come up and make a comment, you are welcome to do so.
Chair of War, members of the supervisors, our supervisors, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Todd Ward. I'm the manager of development and entitlements for Carvana, and we look forward to coming to Placer County. Quite simply, I don't disregard anything that staff said. I'm not going to go back over the facts. They did a good job of showing the facts and what has been done to this point. We do feel like that we have met the requirements both of the state of California and of Placer County, that we had to do all the studies and everything else. What I would like to tell you is a little more about the project and what we intend to do. So as staff mentioned, it is 192,000-square-foot building, plus or minus 190,000 square feet. What we do is think of it as an assembly line. We have four lanes in there where four cars can go down the lane simultaneously, and they are inspected, 150-point inspection. We do change fluids, oils, fluids. We'll change brakes, tires, and make sure that the cars meet our specifications. The model that we use is 100% online. We do provide the services that any other dealer does provide. So you can buy a car from us. We have financing. You can bring your own financing. You can compare the two. We'll buy your car. You can trade in your car, however you want to do it. So it's just like any other traditional auto dealership- So it's just like any other traditional auto dealership, only 100% online. We will bring the car to your home, to your office, and it's touchless delivery, and it takes about 10 minutes at the end. In order to do that, again, we have to have a quality product to build trust in our customers, which is the point of the inspection center. As I said, they go through 150-point inspection. If they meet our criteria, at the very end, we do high-definition photographs, and they are put on the lot. Up to 7,500 cars are on the lot to be sold at any given time. We do try to get cars that meet the demographics of the customers in this region to reduce mileage and trips. As of right now, the closest inspection center that we have is actually in the Phoenix market, and so we have to truck those cars up here because we're already operating. So having an inspection center here would actually reduce those vehicle miles that we would have to bring cars to the customers. So the workforce that we have at the inspection center, the vast majority are skilled workforce. They're either auto mechanics, or they're paint and body technicians. This accounts between 70 and 80% of the workforce that we have. We also have the entry-level workers that come, and they move cars around the lot. They wash the cars, and they do this. What we are proud to say is that we look for initiative in these entry-level positions, and then we take them, mentor them, and provide them with the skill to move up, get many more dollars per hour, and then move into the next position and have that skill for the rest of their life. Additionally, we do have the administrative staff that handles all of the paperwork for the cars, and we also have the logistics team, which is our truck drivers. Another thing that we're proud to say about our truck drivers is they're home every night. So they approximately drive four hours in one, in one direction, come to one of our hubs that we have, drop the truck off, pick up a truck with cars coming back to this market, and then they're able to be home every night with about a nine-hour round trip. All of the positions that we have are fully salaried and are fully benefits. So they aren't contracted employees or anything of the nature. These will be citizens of Placer County. We do hope to work with workforce development, the tech schools, the training schools, however we want to look at it to find the workforce. As I mentioned, it's 850 employees. They work over two shifts, 6:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon, 2:30 in the afternoon till about 10:30 at night. One nice thing about this, other than the administrative staff, these positions are in off-peak hours when they're coming and going to work, thus again, reducing congestion on the highways and freeways. We picked a site that was already zoned for our type of use. We did not come to Placer County and ask for it to be rezoned. So we feel like that that was being a good corporate citizen. We try to do things right by the community. We want to be a part of the community, and we want to be a good corporate citizen. To that end, I just wanted to give you a fuller understanding of what the project is, why we picked the site, and it'll service basically the Pacific Northwest. And I thank you for your time, and any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Looks like Supervisor Holmes, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you for coming forward. So you're gonna be bringing cars in, you're gonna service them, you're gonna change their oil, their transmission fluid, their brake fluid, their brake dust, and all that is gonna be contained. It's gonna be contained in probably double, double containers to keep it from going, running on the floor?
Yes, sir, that's correct. In fact, it's twofold, the cleanliness of the facility. You'd probably be surprised, and we invite you to come whenever we open and see exactly how clean the facility actually is. So it's two different things. One, the company certainly does not want to have the liability in a few years of having any sort of environmental issues on the site. We are very conscious of that. We are a publicly traded company, and that's a liability that we can't afford to have. It's worth doing it right to make sure you don't have to worry about that. The second part of it is, as you mentioned, some of the dust and some of the oils. In order to be a very clean facility, it actually goes back to the safety of our workers. So the cleaner the facility is, the more efficiency we can get out of the facility, and the more safety we can have for our employees to make sure that they're well taken care of.
So when you clean the floor of your facility, do you just take a hose and run it off into the?
No, sir. No, sir, we certainly do not. In fact, what we typically do is we have third-party contractors that are specialized in this type of cleanup. They have specialized chemicals. We will work there with the area and the regulations to make sure that we do things properly. But yes, all the oil is 100% recycled. There are containment facilities for all of that, barrels that they go into. And again, we work with third-party experts to make sure that we do that correctly.
And you'll have periodic inspections required from Placer County Environmental Health to make sure those things are happening right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. You do know he is our resident mechanic, small business owner, so that's those types of questions. Supervisor Augustin?
Thank you, yes. You mentioned that the traffic would be during non-peak times. Can you talk a little bit about the work shifts? I may have missed that in your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. It's probably close to 80% of our workforce, maybe even a little higher. I don't know the exact percentage off the top of my head that would work in these non-peak hours. Our administrative staff would work a standard eight-to-five shift, so they would be coming and going during those peak hours. The trucks are typically loaded up very early in the morning because we want them out on the road before there's any congestion. So our standard working hours that we have are 6:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon, half-hour break in between to let the cars come and go, 2:30 in the afternoon to 10:30 at night.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
All right. No other questions from our boards. Let's go ahead. We will open up the hearing to the public, and if we've got people first in the public, in the room, if there's anybody here who would like to address our board, you are welcome to do so. Yes, Cheryl, come on up.
Hi, I sent you an extensive packet, I'm sure, with lots of lawsuits. Cheryl Burkema from Placer County. I am concerned that the, we mentioned the lawsuits, and I think one in particular is very concerning, and it has to do with a Sacramento car dealer. My concern is for the municipalities in this area. The lawsuit has to do with, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just looking at what's in the articles. It was called predatory practices. So it's currently filed in San Diego, but I think that the municipalities have the right, and when you send them a notice stating we have a project that's coming up, and you don't include an EIR when there are lots of different facets, they may not know what's about to hit them. We have Roseville Auto Mall, one of the largest dealers, in your revenue generators, and cannibalization and loss of revenue of local businesses is important. I feel that the fact that you didn't have an EIR is not only precedent-setting because then the next big company's gonna come in and say, well, they did it. And so you're setting the precedent out the gate. The other lawsuit that's very, and by the way, Google Branding, Lyft, Uber, they're all starting to get into the used car business with Carvana. So they're basically trying to get rid of used cars. This is from articles that I included in there, if you have the chance to look at it. I think the businesses in Placer County deserve to know that. If you look on the map, you'll see the triangle with Auburn off to the side, and they will all be impacted. All Rockland, Roseville, and Lincoln, and Auburn could possibly all have revenue impacted. This is not the time to lose that type of revenue. In addition, the lawsuit that is pending, I believe it's in March, with Sunset Area Plan. The Sunset Area Plan, the reason I think that that should, we should wait until then, postpone the decision, is because a lot of these environmental and new information that's come in on the EIR. The EIR, the previous chancellor has stated there will be no university. So Sunset Area Plan was based on an economic assertion with the statement of overriding consideration that there would be up to 30,000 jobs. That's not going to happen via CSU, based on his statement and the study that was provided by the state for all the universities. So I would say that that means to me, I'm not a lawyer, but the environmental impact report that this is being based on is economically flawed. I'll leave that up to the lawyers to decide that, but I think it's a consideration. Also, the VMT, to discuss VMT is different than actually performing the analysis. So if Caltrans said, oh, I sent you a letter, that's not the same as doing a VMT, which is required now by law to do it, and so that, I believe, is missing in there. The affordable housing impacts, I encourage you to go out to Glassdoor and other job sites and look at the competitive salaries that we're talking about. These are low-wage earners. We're creating another Tahoe. People are gonna have to drive to, from where. They're not gonna be able to afford to live in Roseville. So I think that that should be considered also in terms of traffic. My final comment is the checklist that's being used to streamline this. I asked Callie about that checklist. I said, who are the design committee? There's no minutes. There's no, we don't know who these people are. She provided them to me. But what were the minutes? What decisions were made? What issues were brought up? So when all these other outside parties receive notification, it's purely based on, as Mr. Garbidian said, it's based on the fact that you can't do anything because the staff said it's fine. And I would challenge that and request an EIR. We're not talking about, we don't want the business. We want the appropriate environmental analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here in the chambers wish to make a comment? And then anybody on Zoom? Oh, well, we're gonna take those.
You on Zoom?
Let's go ahead and take the Zoom person, and then Marcus, since you were slow to jump up.
Chris Johnson, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Thank you very much. I have two questions to the applicant and one to the board. The two questions I have to the applicant is, first of all, you mentioned something about spraying paint and doing paintwork. Hopefully, that is going to be comprehended because obviously VOCs are an issue. But my bigger question is, you know, you're doing a greenfield project. Have you even considered looking at redeveloping some of our existing industrial areas or buildings that are not being utilized? And then my follow-on question to the board is, we really need to incentivize redevelopment. We can't keep doing all these greenfield projects. Will you consider coming up with some incentive programs for redevelopment? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else on Zoom? All right, Marcus, why don't you come on up? Well, let's have Marcus come up, and then the person who's on Zoom can come on up after, or can speak after that.
Do you want to go for the Zoom person?
No, go ahead, Marcus, please.
Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard. I wasn't gonna get up and speak, but I represent the underlying property owner and the developer of the Placer Gold Industrial Park, of which this is part of that overall project. CP 3500 Cincinnati and Brett Bumgarner. I just want to bring up a couple of points for today. Everyone keeps talking about the Sunset Area Plan, but this project was fully permitted under the prior Sunset Industrial Area Plan that folks, Mr. Wygant and others worked on back in the 90s, Mr. Euler, in terms of what is an allowed use with the use permit. That was already allowed prior to the Sunset Area Plan being adopted last December. Sequo fully provides exactly what the county process was, which is you do a full EIR for an area. You look at a SEQUA checklist to look at project-specific impacts, but you don't keep doing EIRs six months after you did another comprehensive EIR. The other comment was regarding that the wetlands on site were created tens of thousands or millions of years ago outside of the area to the southern part of the project, which is all being preserved. Almost all the wetlands on which the actual project site is being developed were man-made. They were created by runoff from Formica, which is the existing building there in parcel one of Placer Gold, which my client has redeveloped, fully leased, and has now developed the remainder of the site relative to get it ready for development and bring users in. This is not greenfield. It's part of the Placer Gold Industrial Park, which has gone through multiple environmental reviews, multiple projects. Again, one of the things that people talk about relative to what Sunset Area Plan had was assumed uses, the approved uses, and the trips that were allotted to the site were far in excess of the 2,500 daily trips and the very few peak hour trips. This project site could have a distribution center, including those ones with the big smile that you see that we order lots of things from, that would probably generate in excess of those same-size project sites generate about 10,000 trips a day. Finally, in terms of the wetlands on the site, we keep hearing that this is gonna take out 29% of the wetlands in the area, all the vernal pools that it's gonna affect. It's .28 acres. Not 110 acres, as noted in the appeal, but .28 acres of vernal pools. Isolated vernal pools, which is Mr. Wygant stated, the PCCP was meant to try to avoid preserving wetland resources in the middle of development, as we have in other parts of the region. That was the entire point of that. So again, looking at this, the final comment I'd make is, state of California has been hemorrhaging jobs, hemorrhaging employers. An 850 employer business coming to the state of California, anywhere in the state of California is big news. In the middle of a pandemic, it's unheard of in this state. Placer County has a chance to land those jobs. This is, we think, a very simple decision, and we ask for your action today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Marcus?
Got a question, and then we'll take the Zoom question.
There was a call-in with regards to redeveloping existing buildings. So I think you referenced to the fact that since I was here in 1997, I'm getting older, but.
We all are.
So Formica came here in the mid-'60s.
Correct.
As I recall, created about 400 jobs that lasted until about 10 years ago. I think they chose to close up and consolidate.
A little bit longer than that, yes.
A little bit more. So Mr. Bumgarner bought that property and fully redeveloped, I believe, all of that space that had been closed up for several years before he proposed this project. Is that not accurate?
It was closed up for several years. It was stripped of all wiring and all fixtures. He had to invest about $6 million into that building. It is now fully leased, including with his business. He moved his offices there. The employers that he brought in, almost all of which are new to Placer County, he has spent upwards of $26 million in infrastructure to get the entire approved subdivision map, the industrial subdivision map, with roads in and all utilities for the remainder of Placer Gold, which is immediately to the east of this property, including improvements at Cincinnati Avenue, to get ready for bringing primary wage earner jobs to the site.
So when I first met with Mr. Bumgarner about 10 years ago, his business plan included, first, redeveloping the Formica facility, and then, secondly, developing on the remaining land, of which this is a part of that original concept, correct?
That's correct.
And then, Mr. Garbidian mentioned, I don't recall exactly his word, but a lack of mapping, a lack of maps. One thing that has to be completed, I know, for the conservation plan is the delineation of the wetlands, and you referred to a specific amount of acreage. But we need that specific acreage for the conservation plan in order to know where and how and to what extent the cost is gonna be for that mitigation. So I'm assuming his comments were not accurate as it relates to that mapping. Could you develop that a little?
The SEQUA checklist and the studies that were prepared in support of that, which I think your total package is about 400 pages on that, include a whole bunch of maps, one of which Callie presented to you tonight, or today, that had all the wetland types on the site in detail, prepared by ECor Consulting, the property owner's biological consultant who has been doing all the permitting and all the biological work on the site.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marcus.
Thank you.
I think we've got a couple of calls on Zoom.
Leslie Warren, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, this is Leslie Warren. I'm speaking for the Alliance for Environmental Leadership. We're concerned that the project is inconsistent with the Sunset Area Plan, which, the goal of which, was to attract primary wage earner jobs. These are not primary wage earner jobs. They're low-level hourly wage workers by and large, for whom Placer County has a dearth of affordable housing to provide them shelter. To bring in 850 new low-wage workers without housing to accommodate them would not be a wise decision. a wise decision on the part of the board. The project is going to create Placer County as a dumping ground for an auto repair and dismantling facility that's going to be servicing the whole western northwest region. Why would Placer County want to take in that kind of business? It will hand, and the EIR fails to address how this dismantling and rebuilding facility will impact the life of our landfill. We're seeing 10,400 auto parking spaces for repairing cars, but we don't know from the staff report how many cars over a month, a year, five years will be coming through that center and what kind of volume this facility will generate to fill and potentially shorten the life of our landfill. The staff report fails to analyze how this project could potentially affect tax revenue accruing to the city of Roseville and city of Auburn and any other cities in our area that have auto dealerships. I think that this should be addressed before this project is considered for approval and that some provision should be made that Carvana, a multi-billion dollar valued company, makes cities that will lose tax revenue whole as a part of this project approval. Finally, the Carvana project has a legacy of penalties and violations from OSHA. It's among the highest fined companies. And though we have 17 conditions proposed to mitigate water quality impacts, if Carvana doesn't comply with those conditions, we will suffer. So thank you for letting me provide comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Anybody else on Zoom again? No, all right. We will close public comment. Let's see if there are any further questions from our board and any follow-up from staff on any of the questions that were raised or make sure we just fit every question. Let's see. Well, I have a quick question actually for the applicant, which I'm going to bring up, which is just the whole question about a couple of things. One about sales taxes, if you would address that because, you know, we've got auto dealers, et cetera. But if you would address that as well as the whole issue about OSHA violations with your organization, I think that would be helpful as well, please.
Yes, ma'am, happy to clear that up. So the cars would be no different than any other auto dealership. And as I mentioned, we're already working within this market, so we're not coming in and stealing anything. It just allows the supply to be closer to this market we're already working in. So when we actually register the cars, the title and registration at the very end of the process when we deliver it, that's where the actual tax goes, is to the jurisdiction in which the customer lives, just like any other auto dealership. So again, there should not be a loss of revenue from the jurisdiction because of that.
Thank you.
As far as the OSHA goes, I apologize for that. We are actually, we have a couple. We're a very large company that has 11 of these operating. Unfortunately, the best you can do as a company, there can be an accident, and every time there's an accident, which is very few actually with our facilities, because we take the safety of our workers very seriously, but you do have to do an OSHA report. And those OSHA reports then become public. So there is not a company out there that's never filed an OSHA report, but we take great pride in the low number that we've had to do, whether it be a paper cut or something more serious, but we have never had anything that has been extremely serious that we're proud to say.
Thank you. Looks like we have a couple more questions. Do either of you have questions? So, okay, Supervisor Weigand and then Supervisor Gustafson.
There was reference made to definition, I guess, of primary wage earner jobs. So when Marcus and I were young, the definition of that typically in the market that we targeted for attracting employers was, back then, manufacturing jobs. Those largely have left California, but they were targeted because they tended to pay better, but they also include benefits, retirement and medical benefits, which is a job that every family actually relies on needs if they're going to have a healthy existence. So I think you referred to benefits, but could you develop that a little bit more for me, please?
Yes, sir. Our employees do get full healthcare benefits. It includes vision, dental, paid time off, PTO or personal time off, holidays every year where they're their salary. We also are proud to say that we like to keep up with the professional development of our employees, and we invest within that to make sure that if they have certifications, they can maintain that through their CEUs or continuing education units, or whatever the phrase would be for that particular certification. So we do support our employees in that way. One of the things that I've heard a few times is the low-wage earners. If this was just a distribution center, it would be unskilled workforce that may be minimum wage or slightly above that. Because of the fact that we have a skilled workforce, that we have either the paint and body technicians, which I will clarify, those paint booths are actually modular units that are fully self-contained, that exceed all environmental regulations for air quality when they come out. So they are basically a unit that comes in and gets set. That's a separate item. I just wanted to make sure that I got on the record. That being said, the skilled workforce that we have, we have to be market competitive. We will do a full market study on what that competitive looks like, both for an entry-level person that has just received the training but does not have the real-world experience as of yet, as to the experienced mechanic or out-of-body technician that we hope can move up into a management position or mentoring position of some type. The other part of that is whenever employees do have a skill, it provides them opportunities. They can either A, stay with Carvana, B, they can go to another mechanic shop that maybe is willing to pay them more, or C, they can actually start their own business because they do have a service that would be provided. We do not provide service on the cars that we sell. This is purely inspections for the cars that are going online. So it potentially could create more work or entrepreneurial ship, or however you want to say it, for somebody to become more independent. These are the ways that we look at that and the skilled workforce. So are we going to come in and pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for the jobs? Maybe some of them, if that's the market. Maybe some of them not. But what we will have to be is market competitive. And what that actually means is we want the best of the best, so we have to understand what it's going to take to get the best.
And retirement? Do you have a 401K plan or do you have?
We do have a full 401 matching, 401K plan where the company does match. After a certain number of years, there is the ability to have equity in the company through stock options, non-voting, but still stock options that can build up over the years and becomes part of what you have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Gustafson?
Yes, I had a question. First off, my colleagues have asked most of the questions that were either raised by the public or the appellant. One question I had, well, first off, let me say that for any of us driving a car today, it's almost like driving a computer, and so you do have to be more technically savvy than I am on a lot of times, just trying to change my clock this morning and my drive down my vehicle. So I do think there's more technical abilities certainly today than there used to be in some of these systems. There was a comment made that I don't think has been answered yet, which was the idea that you would be dismantling vehicles and that the landfill would have impacts. And I just wanted to understand. I don't hear anything about dismantling vehicles in the description. I'm certain if you have to replace a part, but you're not dismantling vehicles. Is that correct?
We are not dismantling vehicles. The vehicles that we are getting wholesale for our inspections, we make sure that they appear to meet all of our standards prior to purchasing them. So we do have fully operable cars that are roadworthy when they come in. As far as the paint and body, that would actually just be cosmetics that would be blemishes, or however you want to say it, that we would be taking care of to get them looking as good as they were when they were originally sold. If there are major engine issues, major transmission issues, anything of that nature, they would fail our inspection and we would not dismantle them on site. We would simply wholesale them off. Again, whenever we purchase them, they are all roadworthy at that point in time. They're running, they're operable. This is not anything like a pick apart sort of junkyard, or however you want to say it. So even the cars that are being stored on site, we would make sure that, again, they are of high quality and that we would not have just junkers sitting there leaking fluids into the environment and into the storm drains and everything else. That is correct. We would not dismantle.
Great, thank you. I think the rest of the comments from the public and the appellant have been asked by my colleagues. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmes has a question.
I have a question.
So you're not off the hot seat yet.
Just a comment. There's several auto tech schools around the area, and I've been involved with those and hiring people from those. Sometimes they have a patch on their shirt, but that doesn't mean they have the life experience of working in the, and this, your, your facility will have entry-level positions for these people to get life experience about how, how the business works and gain more and more information. And then, and this happened to me, they'll move on. If you, you're going to encourage these people to be the best they can, and then if they want to move on for a better paying job, you're not going to stop them. And I would envision that some of those young men and women would end up going in their own, taking over their own business and specializing in some of those.
We have seen that, sir. In fact, just to take it to another level, as you said, just because you have the patch doesn't mean you have the real-world experience. We do provide that. The second part is, since our facility functions more like a production facility than a standard auto shop.
Yeah.
You also learn how a production facility works. We've also seen employees get those jobs with those types of production facilities afterwards.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, looks like there are no further questions. We have the opportunity for the appellant, Mr. Garbidian, to take this off, respond. So Michael, I think, try on Zoom if we can hear you. Unmute your mic and hopefully we can hear you.
Yes, I, my phone reception was so bad, I turned that off. The only way I could hear clearly was on Zoom. So I hope you're hearing me okay now.
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Thank you. So.
Well, great. I use Zoom all the time, including with the county, and that, that's a new one on me. So the last half hour, 45 minutes have really demonstrated that what we're getting today, what you are getting today, is a sales job to get Carvana to come to West Sunset Boulevard. The fire is an issue. A recent fire burned right up to the border of Sunset Boulevard. It stopped. A big wind, it stopped right there. And online, there was a fire right on the immediate west side of this area, and, and the area could flood. But, but the real, so emerging from what I've, we've seen today, I'll tell you what the need is. We would request that Carvana meet with us so we can share information with them that you, they are not getting from you or from their terrific counsel. The first time I met Laduka was, Marcus was maybe 17 or 18 years ago, and I've always respected him. In this case, he has grossly misinformed, shockingly, really. So that dialogue, I hope we can start, or at least information share, so they know, at least from our point of view, what's, what's going on here. The, I think the most important, well, let's, let's first of all, talk about Laduka's, Marcus's facts. The, a map you didn't see is the, the, the application submitted by the landowner to the Regional Water Quality Control Board and to the Army Corps of Engineers have different, have wetlands delineations, have indication of the wetlands that they did not show to you, that, that we have filed with our appeal, first appeal. And for instance, the avoidance impact areas for the federal jurisdiction, that the feds say they don't have jurisdiction, so this has to go to the regional board, were there a, let's see, seven, almost an eight-acre impacted wet areas and avoided resources of a few acres. But what's critical here is the Placer County Conservation Plan. The map, proposed impacts to PCCP land cover. Vernal Pool Complex, 61 and a half acres. Marsh Complex, 12 acres. These are, these are unprecedented losses that are such a serious problem. But the great, the great, the critical factor here addressing Supervisor Weigand's, I'm sure, well-felt and recognized points, is that the wetland that is there, the maps you did not see with the wetland delineation of the marsh right next to the existing development, they are compatible. Placer Gold, the existing operations there and in the other buildings along Cincinnati Avenue are compatible with that marsh. That is by no means developed because of some recent water running off from fiber board. Fiber board, is that what he said it was, that building? It wasn't fiber board. So that, that wetland, wetland, it has drainage from the north. It comes from the north. That's when that marsh fills up, coming down from, directly down from the direction of the casino towards that. And then the drainage into that area that comes out of, that was shown on that map that you had there, that shows coming out of Rockland, includes an area that has not yet been developed and has the potential. So there, to the, the minimal, minimal description of the land, you've documented now Marcus's false statements, or I would say, well, I'm sure it wasn't intentional on his part, or it may be selective in, in what he looked at, but was, was exposed to. But we really need, if, for you, to have that information to make your decision that you don't have. And if you deny the, regardless of what happens, we want to open a dialogue with Carvana and information exchange so they really know what's going on and what they're getting into. They should be able to see that they are being lured here without the full facts. So the, that would be our, our request to you. There are a number of issues that need to be gone into and clarified, so, and that the public needs to know and that still have to be resolved. Fortunately, the wetlands here, there's a 401 permit pending at the Regional Water Board that they, it looks like they can't get to it because they have to give 30 days notice on their proposed WDR. They have to give 30 days notice for public comment, so it probably won't get to their, their board, but they don't meet except every two months, so they probably won't get to it until their February, later February meeting. There's no rush here to do this. So that, that process remains. And so, well, I think I'll, I'll stop there because it's, we are thankful, glad to have this opportunity to do our best to bring, bring, bring this issue before you and present these issues to you. And really, so much more of that remains that we will continue to work on, that we hope we will continue to have that opportunity to work with planning and help them do their job that they haven't done yet. So again, thank you for this opportunity and for giving us an understanding of what, what Carvana thinks and for what Marcus needs to go back to the drawing boards to learn about the project. He is not representing the land correctly to any of us or, or to the people that his client wants to sell, the people that his clients wants to sell to. So with all due respect for him and certainly for Carvana, we look forward to, to further work on this, hopefully with you. Hopefully, you will not support denial of the appeal. Thank you. See you again.
Thank you, Mr. Garbidian. Appreciate that. We're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to our board for further deliberation. Supervisor Gustafson?
I just wanted to ask a question of staff on the mapping. Do you want to address some of the information that was presented as fact?
Absolutely. So this project has had multiple biological.
So, this project has had multiple biological reports done on this site. And by reports, I mean different studies, wetland delineations, going back to at least that I'm aware of, 2010. So, in regards to the PCCP land cover type and the amounts that are estimated there, that is simply a land cover type. That is not a reflection of the actual resources that are on the ground. That is the land cover type based on the flora, fauna, and soil types found on-site. In relation to project impacts, those have been disclosed in the environmental checklist. This has been mapped. In relation to the project's application with the Water Board, that is a separate process outside of this land use entitlement. If that does not go forward, then the project would have to reevaluate. All of that said, the biological impacts for this project are disclosed, and the project is required to mitigate. I would also note that the Sunset Area Plan did find that implementation of that plan would have a significant and unavoidable impact. So even if an EIR was prepared for this project, there's no additional mitigation that could possibly be applied to it to reduce those impacts. So this project will be complying with all applicable mitigation measures and would have no net loss of wetlands. Does that answer the question? Okay.
Supervisor Wegans.
Yeah, Kelly, again, just feel compelled to try to get on the record and for the public a better representation of some of the comments that were made today. So, and I don't want to get into the detail of that too much. So with the conservation plan, Placer County Conservation Plan, it envisioned and required, obviously minimally, that for regulated habitat, regulated species, waters that are regulated either by the state or the federal government, that it would minimally protect those as per state and federal laws. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the analysis that you just referred to on the site was done in that regard, correct?
That's correct.
Beyond that, the conservation plan articulated values because of the idea of trying to preserve the habitat in the open space, an open space convergence fee that even anticipates and protects for species and/or waters that might be changing and/or so small that they're not expressly depicted in some statute somewhere, but called out for, for protection, kind of a synergistic benefit in conservation for that. So it might include things like burrowing owls, which we are protecting in Placer County beyond what might be required in a state and federal species protection. Is that not correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
And again, to circle back, so the biological resource evaluation that went into this site included all of that, is that not correct?
That is absolutely correct. And I would note that the conditions of approval identify the applicable mitigation measures for impacts to those species.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Yeller.
Yeah, and one other thing in regard to the PCCP. Does the PCCP not essentially say that unless you are directly connected to an existing water course, we really don't want to see parcels less than two-hundred acres set aside for preservation? Didn't we establish a threshold that said that you have to be of a size and scope that would be sustainable and significant moving forward unless you could prove connectivity to an existing water course? So if you're now tying into a ravine or something, then we can consider that. Was that not the idea?
That's my understanding.
Robert, is that your recollection as well? That was mine as well. Couple of things. This conversation in regard to primary wage earner jobs, I always find it a fascinating conversation. Obviously, Placer County has done a very good job of creating primary, well, not creating, I won't say that, because frankly, government doesn't create jobs. We create the opportunity for the private sector to invest and create jobs. But we've done it in numerous areas throughout our county. I would simply point out that last month, California's unemployment rate was eleven percent. That equates to about four million Californians actively looking for work who could not find work, many of whom, I'm sure, were probably recently laid off from other service-related industry jobs. These are people who are probably a little younger in life, maybe living with relatives or parents or something along those lines. And I'm sure any number of those four million people who in September were unable to find a job here in California would be thrilled for the opportunity to apply for one of these eight-hundred-and-fifty jobs. As to the admonition that Mr. Garabedian felt it was his right to issue to our staff, on our staff quote-unquote advocating for projects, I want to thank you for recognizing that this board goes through a number of hearings to position ourselves so that an applicant can come in and take advantage of the previous actions taken by our board of supervisors in evaluating a community plan and adopting an EIR that sets up the opportunity for an applicant to be able to come in and go through exactly the kind of process this applicant has gone through. What I really want to thank you for is your understanding that once the board has acted, it's staff's job to implement. And that's what you're doing. You're implementing the plan that our board adopted. And so whereas Mr. Garabedian sees it as advocacy, I see it as you doing your jobs. So thank you for doing your jobs.
All right, thank you Supervisor Yeller. Any further discussion on this item? Supervisor Yeller?
No, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Do you want to make a motion then?
Yeah, I'm prepared that we, I'm sorry Karen, was there anything there? Okay. We moved, we denied the third-party appeal filed by Mr. Garabedian and everybody that's in Placer County tomorrow, and that we determine the potential impacts Placer Vehicle Inspection Center project are within the scope of the analysis of the 2019 Certified Sunset Area Ranch, Placer Ranch Specific Plan Final Impact Report, Environmental Impact Report, and supported by the findings as contained in the staff report. Is that one motion that we should do before moving on to upholding the planning commissions? Or can we do them all in the same?
You can do them all in one.
Okay. And that further, we go ahead and uphold the planning commission's decision and inclusive of all of the recommendations on page forty-four of our staff packet, page ten of the staff report, items three and four.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and do we need a roll call? No, all right. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the work and the conversation. All right, it is twelve-thirty-eight. We have an eleven-thirty hearing and an appeal. I would like to at least take a short bio break, short nutrition. We're not going to do closed session because it's going to take us thirty minutes in closed session, so I don't want the folks who are waiting outside to wait any longer. So let's do this, and I apologize for, but we do need to take a little short break. We'll come back, I have to look at a clock.
It's twelve-thirty.
It's twelve-thirty-eight, twelve-forty, twelve... You know, let's just take fifteen minutes, so twelve-fifty-five. And I apologize, y'all, and I'm sorry we went long, but this is sort of the process. So we're going to come back at twelve-fifty-five, and we'll start the next item. Nine, which is the third-party appeal, Catuna Residential Care Home Minor Use Permit. Thank you, folks, for being patient with us. Appreciate that very much. And we will start with our staff report from Delaney Farnham. And just a, just a heads up, I'm waiting for an update about my dad, so if I jump up and walk away, I will let Supervisor Wegans continue the hearing until I get back.
Thank you all. I am Delaney Farnham with Planning Services. Today, we have a third-party appeal of the planning commission's approval of the Catuna Residential Care Home Minor Use Permit. Actions requested of you today is to deny the third-party appeal filed by John Peterson, representing twenty-five resident petitioners, uphold the planning commission's decision to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring programming, reporting program, and uphold the planning commission's decision to approve the minor use permit for the Catuna Residential Care Home. So the project is located at six-five-zero-five Arabian Circle in Granite Bay, in between Barton Road and Auburn Folsom Road along Douglas Boulevard. The property is approximately one-point-nine acres and is generally square in shape with relatively flat terrain that gently slopes from south to north towards Douglas Boulevard. The site is developed with an existing two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-one-square-foot residence with an attached garage. There is an in-ground pool and a detached one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-six-square-foot barn. The site has large dry pasture area in the front with mature trees along the perimeter. The property is owned residential agriculture combining minimum build site of one-hundred-thousand square feet. The site is bounded to the north by Douglas Boulevard and the Stratford Downs subdivision, to the west by Arabian Circle and the Granite Bay Veterinary Clinic, and to the south and east are existing single-family residential lots that are also zoned RAAB-100. Some of the surrounding land uses along the Douglas Boulevard corridor from west to east include memory care and residential care facilities, a community park, commercial professional center, a creative arts and music center, church, the Granite Bay Library, Granite Bay Veterinary Clinic, taxidermy, and the Country Gapel Shopping Center. So this project would line up right in between those surrounding land uses. So what the applicant is proposing is to construct a ten-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot addition to the existing residence for use as a fifteen-bed residential care home. The residential care home of six or more is in allowed use within the residential agricultural zone district with the approval of a minor use permit. The care home would include private rooms, common kitchen, living room, dining room, media library, laundry, admin offices, outdoor courtyard, and the operation of the care home consists of rotating staff of five to seven employees, providing twenty-four-hour non-medical care. The care would include supervision provided on-site, which includes assistance with dressing, grooming, personal hygiene, assistance with self-administered medications, and also providing programs to meet social, emotional, and physical needs of the residents. The existing single-family residence on the site would continue to be occupied by the owner's operators, and they would live there as their primary residence. So the proposed addition does meet the development standards of the property, including the setback from Douglas Boulevard, which is a seventy-five feet from the seventy-foot right-of-way, the setback off of Arabian Circle, which is seventy-five feet from the centerline of traveled way, and is also consistent with the allowable site coverage of the site, which is thirty-five percent. Access to the property is from a private road off of Arabian Circle. The proposed driveway improvements would include a one-way circular driveway that would be a width of a minimum of fourteen feet. The circulation would provide access to the front door under a covered driveway with an additional provision to bypass the cover portion. On-site parking is provided around the circular driveway for eight vehicles, including two ADA spaces. On-site overflow parking for seven cars will also be provided. The residential care home addition would have a separate main entrance and would be attached to the single-family dwelling by the existing garage. Some of the off-site improvements that would occur include the encroachment improvement at the Arabian Circle Douglas Boulevard corridor intersection, which would be a one-sixteen plate. This would essentially cut back on both sides of the encroachment for a deceleration taper and acceleration taper onto Douglas Boulevard, and also provide for better driver sightline visibility. Additionally, Arabian Circle would be widened from its current condition of fourteen feet to a twenty-foot paved road with two-foot shoulders. Additionally, sewer would be constructed from the Douglas Boulevard intersection down Arabian Circle to the southern property line. So this project was initially heard at the zoning administrator hearing on May twenty-first. Twelve public comments were made during that time. Concerns were regarding the compatibility of the use, changes to the character in the neighborhood, road improvements, intersection safety, and decrease in neighboring property values. One topic of discussion was the amount of on-site parking available. So the project does meet our zoning ordinance parking standard. However, the zoning administrator did identify a need for overflow parking and therefore added condition number forty-seven, which allows for on-site overflow parking for up to seven vehicles. Another concern that was brought up was potential safety issue of residents walking or exercising on Arabian Circle due to the lack of pedestrian sidewalks on the private road. The zoning administrator addressed this point by adding condition forty-eight, which restricted the residents from exercising on Arabian Circle. Ultimately, the zoning administrator took action to approve the minor use permit with the added conditions and to allow the construction of the Catuna Residential Care Home. An appeal of the zoning administrator's decision was filed on June first. The planning commission considered the third-party appeal on August twenty-seventh. Public comments were made during the hearing with opposition to the proposed project due to several concerns with safety and compatibility. The planning commission deliberated several of the issues that were brought up. As a result, they eliminated that condition number forty-eight because restricting the residents from walking or exercising on Arabian Circle was deemed too restrictive and not justified. The commission ultimately took action to approve the minor use permit and adopt the mitigated negative declaration, seven to zero for the project. The appeal that we have before today was submitted on September eighth by John Peterson and the twenty-five resident petitioners. Some of the same issues kind of reoccurring from the previous appeals, but they include inconsistency with the Granite Bay Community Plan, incompatible with the neighborhood, inadequate findings for a minor use permit, traffic impacts and road safety concerns, overburning of fire emergency services, noise impacts. They've provided requested changes to conditions of approval to limit the type of patients and the parking, and also they brought up procedural Brown Act violations that they believed happened during the plant review process. So just to address some of these concerns, as far as compatibility goes, we have reviewed the proposed addition as well as the use, which meets the development standards in our RA zone district. It meets the setbacks in development standards along Douglas Boulevard as outlined in the Granite Bay Community Plan. It meets the design guidelines also outlined in the Granite Bay Community Plan, and it is consistent with the development along the Douglas Boulevard corridor. In regards to the traffic impacts, the appellant's emphasized that the proposed improvements don't resolve hazardous Douglas Boulevard Arabian Circle intersection. The improvements that are required at this intersection include increasing the side of, increasing the size of the Douglas Boulevard taper area by grading back the bank two to ten feet. This will improve driver visibility entering and exiting Arabian Circle and improve the visibility onto Douglas. On the slide, you can see in red is the current site condition, so it's turning onto Arabian is just short distance as well as turning onto Douglas. The yellow indicates what the improved driver sightline visibility would look like post-construction. They also expressed concerns regarding vehicle turning movements along Douglas due to Dover Circle being offset to Arabian Circle. Originally, staff had reported at the zoning administrator that no collisions had occurred near these intersections. However, we did provide updated information gathered by the CHP. There was one collision reported in this intersection in the last three years, and it should be noted that that reported collision was due to a driver medical emergency and not a result of traffic or road safety. The appellant's also questioned the Catunas having the right to use Arabian Circle for a private residential street for the entry of the residential care home. We did look at creating an alternative entry off of Douglas, however, that created a safety issue for this intersection and would impact the safety concerns that the neighbors have identified. The Catunas have legal access to the property from Arabian Circle, which is a private road maintenance agreement. They are going to be required to improve the road to our private road access standards to improve for safety. There is, the existing agreement for the project would provide that they pay their fair share and contribute that towards the maintenance of the private road. In regards to the aesthetics, the appellant's draw comparisons with the Elam Glenn Care Home and are concerned with a project creating blight to the neighborhood. Views from this project are short-range and limited to travelers on Douglas Boulevard and Arabian Circle. Current views of the project site include the existing single-family dwelling, the barn, driveway, and the fallow pasture land. Existing landscaping and mature trees are to remain on-site, and they're also proposing to do additional landscaping, fencing around the entire site to also help with the views and the aesthetics. Some of the additional appeal points, just to touch on these... Some of the additional appeal points, just to touch on these, were inadequate findings made for a minor use permit. The appellant's proclaimed that we did not determine that the project was going to be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of the local residents and to their property, citing that traffic impacts, safety, and quality of life would be impacted. We have specific conditions of approval, which are included to improve the safety of the existing road, which includes conditions 20 through 24. The residential care home will operate and function with a low impact to traffic and is fully contained to the site. The improvements and conditions ensure that the findings will adequately be met to protect the general welfare of the people residing or working in the neighborhood. The appellant's contests that the proposed use will exacerbate an already unsafe intersection at the Arabian Circle Douglas Boulevard intersection. The proposed use of a 15-bed care home does not significantly impact traffic due to the likelihood that many, if not all, the residents will not be driving. In addition, the anticipated increase in traffic will be from employees, deliveries, and temporary visitors. Staff has conditioned the project to make off-site improvements, including intersection improvement and Arabian Circle widening. Another concern brought up was the overburdening of emergency services and the cost to the public for the addition of the residential care home, placing extra emergency calls. The anticipated increase in, sorry, the anticipated increase in population resulting from the proposed project is minimal and would support 15 residents with five to seven employees. It is reasonable to expect that some emergency calls will be made. However, the South Placer Fire District has reviewed the project and has provided temporary will serve letters, and they have been involved with the project since the environmental review process, and we have included their conditions for the project. So in addition, we're bringing forward our recommendation to deny the third-party appeal filed by John D. Peterson and the 25 resident petitioners. We ask that you uphold the Planning Commission's decision to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the minor use permit. These recommendations are subject to the findings and recommended conditions of approval in the staff report. And I would like to add that we did have correspondence this morning with the appellant's. They are bringing forward language that they would like to see included in the project, so two conditions. One was to specifically condition this project to be for a residential care home for elderly care only, and the other item was to restrict the residents from going onto Arabian Circle. So if you have other questions, I'm happy to answer those, and I'll let the appellant's maybe address their points.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll start with questions from our board supervisor Holmes.
The 20-foot widening of Arabian Circle, is that going to be the complete roadway? Or is that just up to the Catuna property?
Yeah, so the widening would begin at Douglas Boulevard and continue to the south property line of the project site.
So it doesn't go all the way back?
Doesn't go all the way down. It goes just to the south portion of the property.
Other questions from our board? I don't see any right now. So we will go ahead and take the appellant. Is the appellant in the room or online? All right, Mr. Peterson, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, come on up. I don't know how long you plan to take. I understand it was about an hour at the Planning Commission, so I'm going to ask you to limit it to no more than 30 minutes.
Okay. I was told it was 10 to 15 minutes, so.
Well, there you go. I even gave you extra, so.
Can I take this off?
Yes, if you feel comfortable, you are welcome to do so.
I did spend the morning taking my 30-page, you're down to about seven, so it'll be a lot briefer than 30 minutes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me. My name's John Peterson. I'll take my glasses off to read this. I'm the appellant, along with 25 other residents all on the street of Arabian Circle and Palomino Court, which is the spur off Arabian. I'm an attorney, real estate broker, and a small business owner, and I've resided on Palomino Court since 1997. As I said, I'm appealing along with 25 homeowners and residents representing pretty much the other 15 homes in this neighborhood besides the vet clinic and the proposed Catuna project. So everyone that signed are pretty much directly impacted by this application and use this existing private access roadway, Arabian Circle and Palomino Court. Back when we appealed to the Planning Commission and before the zoning administrator, we did submit a petition around Granite Bay, and it was signed by over 300 people not in support of the project, unanimously against the project. Excuse me. Obviously, our appeal seeks to overturn the Planning Commission's denial of the appeal of the results of the zoning administrator's hearing decision on May 21st. During the Planning Commission hearing, the Planning Commission failed to address any of our arguments regarding the failure to make findings by the zoning administrator regarding minor use permit requirements and any sequoia shortcomings. The Planning Commission addressed a few minor issues related to development standards such as setbacks in road design, but appeared to base its decision on a few additional rationales, which I'll go over. First of all, they stated that the use by the facility of 15 residents is somehow not significantly greater than six residents, which by law, by California law, is allowable as a residential use under state law and wouldn't require a permit. And the Catunas currently operate a six-bed facility in Folsom, which I understand they'll sell or get rid of if this is approved. But the Catunas under state law, you know, they could do a six-unit facility. That's because it's treated as a residential use. They really, the county really can't impose requirements on these facilities that are not also applied to all residential uses within this zone. However, concluding that a permit is justifiable since 15 residents is not much greater than six residences. Residence flies in the face of the regulatory scheme and is completely illogical. This facility will be 156% greater than a six-resident facility. The building is going to go from approximately 2,100 square feet to over 12,000 square feet. How can you make a finding that there'll be no impact on the neighborhood based on the size of the facility? The second point the Planning Commission made was that the residents in the neighborhood would not be restricted in building a structure the size of the Catunas' proposed facility. In other words, they could build a residential structure of 12,000 square feet. So why should the Catunas be restricted to something that's less? Again, the Planning Commission failed to even comprehend the regulatory scheme here. A six-resident home could build with the same constraints as a residence. When the six resident lines exceeded, a different regulatory scheme exists. So for them to say that a resident could build a 12,000-square-foot home, why shouldn't the Catunas? It makes no sense because a discretionary permit's required to do that, and it really does not, it's not conducive to the neighborhood. The next nearest largest home is roughly 4,000 square feet. Let's see. The findings that they would have been required to make would be the project's consistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood. The project is consistent with the applicable policies and requirements of any applicable community plan. The project is not detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood, and the project does not generate a volume of traffic beyond the design capacity of all roads providing access to the project. They failed to really even address any of these issues at the Planning Commission hearing. How could they say with a straight face that the project meets any of these criteria? Rather, the discussion focused on how the Catunas should have similar rights to access the road as all the homeowners on Arabian with their residential care people and should be virtually by right enabled to build a commercial structure equivalent to the size of a residence that a homeowner would be entitled to build. But paying residential care customers are not equivalent to a homeowner or even an invitee of a homeowner who visit on occasion and leave the vicinity. The third point at the Planning Commission that they addressed was that state law requires a license, and Placer County policy is to leave it up to the state to determine what residential care business will be licensed for the state. The county, the county codes allows a residential care home to be built, and that's what this minor use permit is being issued for. However, residential care home definition doesn't address age or any other restrictions, and it's much broader than the state definition of a residential care facility for the elderly. And we attempted to argue that it should be restricted to a residential care home for the elderly. If it was just a residential care home approval, it could be any number of scenarios under the state, halfway houses, drug rehab, things of that nature. And their sequel analysis utilized the concept that it's going to be a dementia care facility with very few people coming and going. So made no sense that they licensed it as a residential care home, and we wanted it to be a residential care facility for the elderly. We actually met with the Catunas for the first time last night, and it was good to talk to them and get to know a little bit more about them. And we did discuss that concept, and they have no problem restricting this minor use permit to a facility that's a residential care facility for the elderly under state law. That's been their intention from the beginning. They probably wouldn't make money if they had to do something else. And that's in one of our conditions that we've submitted today and that the Catunas agree with. We feel the county of Placer and the Placer, and the Planning Commissioner are doing a great disservice to the Granite Bay community and the Arabian Circle neighborhood specifically by putting no restrictions on what may occur on this property once it's built, as long as it fits that all-encompassing definition of residential care home. Glen Ellen, a 15-unit residential care facility that was originally approved in 2013, which is about a half-mile away, had a restriction placed on it as dementia-only. And now the county policy appears to be, there's not going to be any restrictions. Doesn't seem fair. Another issue we had is that the current road is inadequate and doesn't meet Placer County fire requirements. The South Placer Fire Protection District subdivision site requirement, Appendix B, states as far as a dead-end roadway, and that's what this roadway is. Arabian Circle's a dead end. It goes into two dead ends, Arabian Circle and Palomino Court. Originally, when the subdivision was designed, Arabian Circle was meant to be a horseshoe coming back to Douglas, and that never got built. There was also another proposed easement that took it out to Eureka on the other side, never got built. So we're currently a dead-end road. The South Placer Fire Protection District standard says the maximum length of a dead-end road shall not exceed cumulative lengths for parcels proposed, 1 to 4.99 acres, which we are. The maximum would be 1,320 feet. Arabian Circle and Palomino Court measure 2,700 feet in length when you count all the spurs, and that's more than double what the maximum is. Despite that, the Placer Fire Department approved this project. The site requirements for South Placer Fire go on to say that roadway serving five parcels or more shall meet Placer County standards as far as width, but be not less than 24 feet in width. The minor use permit only calls for 20 feet of paving with two-foot gravel shoulders, and that's just for the initial parcel opposite the Catunas. The remainder of the road is well less than 20 feet in width, so not up to standard. With regard to the findings required for a minor use permit, we again assert the county failed to make the proper findings. Finding number two states that the proposed use is consistent with applicable policies and requirements of the applicable community plan, which is the Granite Bay Community Plan. In my packet I submitted, I went through probably 30 different provisions that talked about the unique character of the nature, the scenic area, and other things that come up under the Granite Bay Community Plan that this project clearly violates. Some are policies, some are guidelines, but if you read through the Granite Bay Community Plan, it's pretty clear that they really can't make the findings for a minor use permit here. In that sense, we believe it's an egregious overreach. The development in no way enhances the quality of life in the Granite Bay community. It's going to aid in destroying the unique neighborhood character, which is a big requirement under the Granite Bay Community Plan. The Granite Bay Community Plan expressly opposes additional commercial development, particularly along Douglas Boulevard. The plan stated that many residents want to maintain a predominance of large-lot, single-family development with opportunities for animal raising and agricultural activities. Again, this project's in direct conflict with that stated priority. The project does not protect or preserve the unique rural character. In fact, it's going to hasten the loss of the rural residential community. It directly disrupts the character of this neighborhood, and it's clearly commercial. We feel the project's going to make the neighborhood less accessible and attractive. It's located in the middle of a rural residential housing development that is not in any way preserving the character of the neighborhood. Another problem we have is that the abundance of care facilities in Granite Bay show this facility is not necessary for local residents. We did a count of the number of elderly care beds within a mile of this project, predominantly on the corner of Barton and Douglas, and there's over 200 beds either built or approved, all done in the last 10 years or so. The Granite Bay unit plan also directs commercial development to existing commercial centers located at Auburn, Folsom, and Douglas, and Sierra College and Douglas. And yet, here we are taking properties owned RAAB 100 and turning it into a commercial, essentially a commercial facility. That detracts from the existing rural residential neighborhood. So, you know, the addition of a 12,000-square-foot building is not in any way, shape, or form conducive to the character of an existing rural residential community that's existed for over 40 years. The average residence in our neighborhood is between 2,000 and 3,500 square feet. This is 12,000 square feet. We're going to have to drive by it every day. The Granite Bay Community Plan also contemplates Douglas Boulevard as a scenic road, and this is not enhancing the scenery. In fact, the, they've treated the design of this building like it fronts Douglas Boulevard, and yet it really doesn't. It fronts our neighborhood, Arabian Circle. So to come up with a craftsman-style design to fit with the commercial concept of Douglas Boulevard and then impose that on our road makes no sense. There's another part of the plan that discourages teardowns. This isn't directly relevant, but some of the language is. The teardowns result in massive, out-of-scale new structures that completely ignore the existing character of the neighborhood. So we kind of have a loophole here where you probably couldn't build a new residence that's completely out of the existing character of the neighborhood, yet this residential care facility with a discretionary permit is going to allow a big, massive, out-of-scale building. Finding number three for a minor use permit is the project is not detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of the residents and the neighborhood. We've addressed the impacts on traffic, safety, and quality of life here. The county is not allowing entry of this project onto Douglas Boulevard. If they had, we probably would have not opposed or would have been less opposed. Instead, they've chosen our street, Arabian Circle, which is a private road. It not only creates more traffic, it creates liability issues for us. Entry-exit on Arabian creates an improper and unsafe use of the private road easement. It creates added traffic noise and a bottleneck at the only way in and out of the street. The Catunas' use of the street easement by vehicles supporting their operation will be disproportionately heavier than daily use of all other owners and residences. This will be an unreasonable burden on the easement, which was intended for residential use and access. Most homes in our neighborhood have two drivers on-site. Our private road will be overburdened by the added use. Our piece will be disturbed by the noise of more vehicle traffic. Why should we, as neighbors, some living here for decades, have to forfeit our privacy, safety, and peace to accommodate a new commercial business on a private residential street? Finding four for a minor use permit requires a proposed project use be consistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood and will not be contrary to its orderly development. The county contends the building design is consistent with the Granite Bay Community Plan. I touched on that earlier with the craftsman-style building. But the site plan shows the building, along with the existing house and barn, will take up two-thirds of the lot, which is, at 1.9 acres, is the smallest-sized lot on the street. Other houses on the street are all 2.3 acres or more with ample open-field space surrounding them, consistent with residential egg zoning. This project will have security fencing and gates adding to the effect of a massive compound, not consistent with the current look of the property and neighborhood, which are semi-rural with barns and fields. Currently, the 2,100-square-foot ranch home with the front pasture's on the corner with the barn behind, the pasture will vanish, and a 10,400-square-foot addition will stand in its place. The building will stick out like a sore thumb at the front entrance to our street. Finding five for a minor use permit is that the proposed project will not generate a volume of traffic beyond the design capacity of all roads providing access to the project, either those existing or those to be improved with the project, unless a specific design deficiency is acknowledged and approved. Again, this is an unsafe intersection. We found the CHP report that showed 32 accidents on Douglas Corridor in the last three years. To say that only one accident's been outside of this intermediate intersection is a little disingenuous. I've seen at least three in the last three years. I think it's a well-known fact that this area of Douglas is overburdened with traffic. Everyone's flying about 70 miles an hour. We just had a horrible accident on Auburn, Folsom, and Douglas with loss of life, I believe. And it just doesn't make sense to add to the flow here of traffic. Mr. Rososco, the zoning administrator, commented that the county's requirement- Mr. Rososco, the zoning administrator commented that the county's requirement that the Catunas' widen the entrance to Arabian will help visibility at the intersection, increase safety. But the widening does nothing to resolve the hazardous intersection design here. There's offset opposing turns from Dover across the street. People come out of Granite Cove, which is on the opposite side of Douglas and do a U-turn right in front of Arabian Circle if they want to head east. There's cars in the median waiting their turn to get into the traffic, the 50 mile per hour plus speeding traffic in both directions. Adding more vehicles will exacerbate the hazards and make it even more difficult for us to get in and out of our homes. The proposed widening is limited by the easements on Douglas and Arabian Circle. If the easements do not allow for the intersection to have full visibility, increased traffic should not be allowed. Instead of focusing on this, the county focused on vehicle miles traveled, which is irrelevant to solving the poor design of the intersection. We don't believe this point's been mitigated at all with respect to the hazards at the We also challenged the Sequa findings largely for similar reasons, that the county found that most of the impacts were less than significant. We believe most of the impacts are significant. The proposed project is not going to be consistent with the visual character of the surrounding developments. The addition of the proposed project will degrade the visual character or quality of the site. The construction of a single story 10,400 square foot addition plus landscaping will change the visual quality of the proposed site and the surrounding area. The design is not similar in nature to the surrounding buildings, which are predominantly ranch style and equestrian. Let's see. Accordingly, we believe the neg deck in his air here and there'll be significant increase in demand for the fire protection EMF services at a large facility of this nature. I alluded to the meeting we had with the Catunas last night and we talked about restricting this facility to a residential care facility for the elderly under state law. And this morning they agreed to language to that effect. And our other discussion point was we would, they would agree to not allow these residents, the elderly residents to access our private road. And they've agreed to that beyond the project location and they're okay with that too. So we have some language that we've submitted for your review for that. If those two conditions are approved by you here today, I think all of the opponents will be fine with the project. We can live with it. We're not happy about it, but we've agreed that those two conditions will make this project viable. If those are denied, we'll have to look at what our other options are. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Any questions right now from our board? Looks like not. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. We will go ahead and ask-
Ma'am Chair, I do have one question that did come up, sir.
All right, go ahead.
Within the subdivision, do you guys currently have CCNRs?
Nope.
And so then I assume that you don't have an internal design review committee for modifications to existing stuff?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we can go ahead and take the applicant. Is the applicant in the room or on Zoom? Y'all are the applicant. Did you want to address the board on this item? You're welcome to, you do not have to. All right, thank you. All right, let's see. So we're going to go ahead and open this up to the public. So if anybody here in the room would like to address our board, you are more than welcome to do so. And I just ask that you space yourself out according to the six foot markers on the carpet there.
Good morning. My name's Sandy Harris and I live in Granite Bay. I didn't know the residents had met with it because I don't live in this neighborhood, but I'm concerned at its precedent setting because I do live in a neighborhood with a private road and large lots. And I think this is, there are numerous, numerous low density neighborhoods on private streets in Granite Bay. Most of the new projects being approved are all on private roads. And I wouldn't want something like this in my neighborhood because if they were going to go ahead and build it out at the way it's already built for six people, I don't think there'd be any opposition to it. But when you're coming in and completely redoing a whole residence that way for 15 more people, it's not needed. The zoning administrator noted that there were, there was a vet center, an art center, a taxidermy church and library in the area. They're all in Douglas. They're not on this private road. And all these entities have access from Douglas and they have been there for at least 45 years. I've been here 43 years and they were all there then except for the library, which is the newest addition and it's about 25 years old. And they all serve community needs. The vet, the library, the church, they all serve community needs. And I think the chart that's included in your documents today makes it very clear that we are overbuilt on these type of facilities for Granite Bay. We have about 23,000 residents and about 4,200 of them are over 65. And I know that many of those over 65, myself included, plan to stay in place and not use one of these facilities. And we only need, we have an average of 31 beds per thousand is what the national average is and we're way over that in Granite Bay. This board itself recently approved two big care facilities on Sierra College Boulevard to serve this type of need. So we don't need this and I think it's precedent setting and maybe the neighbors are okay with it, but I don't want to see something like this being built all through our area. We have too many large lots that people can come in and do this on. And we have, I know many years ago, I did some research and there were at least 30 of these homes in private homes in Granite Bay for six or more. So that's a lot when we have such a small population and we're pretty much built out. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, Sandy?
Thank you for your comment.
Just real quick, wanted to give you the opportunity to clarify something. You said that the vet accesses on Douglas. Do you want to clarify that?
I said what?
You gave an example of a number of-
Yeah.
Things in the area and you said, but all of them accessed directly onto Douglas.
Yeah.
The veterinary that's immediately across from this?
Accesses from Douglas.
No, it's onto Arabian. You go on-
Well, that's true.
Yeah. So directly across the street-
The building is on Douglas.
I just wanted to clarify that this is-
You're right. You're always so technical, nitty picky.
Well, when you're talking about the property immediately across the street from what we're being asked to consider-
Right.
-is kind of an important point. Now, quick question for you.
Right.
In Carolinda Estates, beautiful subdivision, love it back there. Do you have CCNRs?
We do, but nobody pays any attention.
But you do have CCNRs?
But I'm on the board.
I know you are. We do, you do have CCNRs and you do have design review within Carolinda, right?
We do.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public?
Cheryl Burkina again. I am with Sandy. I would like to see a show of hands from the supervisor. How many want one next door to them? Would you like a 12,000 square foot home like that next to you? Seriously?
It won't fit in my neighborhood, but I wouldn't have-
Well, seriously. I think, I think that, that the nature of Granite Bay is to have rural properties and I know that people are feeling defeated because everything that comes before this board gets passed and people are trying to do the best they can for their neighborhood. They shouldn't have to. We have the community plan. We already are built out. Supervisor Euler, which SMD is this in? We haven't had a sewer study for over 10 years. I brought this up at the MAC. We keep adding all these extra commercial type facilities. It's only 15, but those things add up. We've had multiple ones in the past four years passed. I'd like to reference the accident that happened on, it's very similar, so on Eureka at Auburn Folsom. Mr. La Duca presented this project at the MAC with Kirk Euler there. They had, they fit within the stamp of the property, but they went from like 20 to 28 with a use permit. And they went from, they had several variances. They had setbacks to the street, they had solid wall, they had setbacks on the side, parking. They were told by traffic engineering, F level of service. They were told that there was high speed on that street, very similar to what's on Douglas. So in the variance, I want to read you. Staff said that they've determined that granting of these setback variances among these property lines will not adversely affect the character or safety or of the general facility. The unique design requirements for this project necessitate these variances, which fulfill a high quality unified design concept. They put a block wall, oh, just a block wall, no problem. It cost a life. You created a perfect firestorm, the planning did, you approved it. A woman lost her life. By looking at these, it's only minor variances, they're not minor. The appropriate level of work has not been done. If they can't, if they put something on Arabian, why can't they just move it over? If it's not safe on Douglas, then it's not safe on Arabian from Douglas. So I urge you to consider the fact that people may die there and they already have and that those decisions shouldn't be taken as lightly as they are. One model home is on Eureka at Granite Bay now. I think it's a different name. One model home, it's not even built and there's already a death there. So I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
My name's Mike Nocke and we live, we just moved into the neighborhood off Arabian Circle June 4th of 2019. So about a month after we moved in, we found out about the proposal for the MUP. And, you know, you learn important lessons, I guess. We came from Granite Bay Hills, we had CCNRs, but I'm hoping that you folks aren't just putting a stamp of approval on something just because we don't have CCNRs. You know, we learned an important lesson, we should, but you still should look at the viability of this MUP regardless of the CCNRs. After finding out about it, you know, you evaluate, you know, can you live with it? And so there was one deal breaker for me and that was the liability of people coming off the premises. I don't know if you've been to memory care centers before and I've had family that we had to visit and you can't get out of the facility in a memory care facility. They can't leave. What you do is the son, daughter, grandson, granddaughter will, you know, take their parents or grandparents out to dinner, they'll leave. But we would be on the facility, walking in their atrium and not leaving the premises. So for me, the increased liability, because it's certain to happen, somebody's going to take their parent, walk down the street on a private road. I don't mind if Dave or Regina or their family members are on the street and they're strolling, running, walking, whatever, because everyone has skin in the game. But if you're going to add another 50 people and then some that have the ability to come down a private road, it just takes one person falling, attorneys will be all over that and then we'll just get sued. And that was my biggest issue. And in the meeting in May, May 21st, they agreed to it. They agreed to keeping everybody on the premises. And then the findings that got lawyered up and then you guys indicated that they couldn't have any exercising off the premises. Well, I mean, that is just such a vague thing. We didn't want the people to leave the premises because of the increased liability. And then I think through the second appeal, I think it disappeared because it was too restrictive. So for me, that's my biggest issue. I don't want to, because it is a deal breaker and I've already, you know, haven't even finished unpacking and I don't want to have to put my house up for sale, even though the real estate's pretty, pretty nice right now, but I don't want to have to pack all my bags up again and leave the neighborhood. So we did talk to Regina and Dave last night and honestly, we should have done that a long time ago. It was nice to meet them, they're good people, you know, I wish them the best in their business. They got a lot of passion for what they do, but they agreed to have the people stay on the premises. And I'm asking you folks, that if they're in agreement for it, can you put it back on there where they can't leave the premises and go down a private road? And for me, that was my biggest issue and I appreciate you considering it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Mimi Gearing and I live on Palomino Court. Obviously, I'm very opposed to this project for reasons that everyone's talked about. But last night after a meeting with the Catunas, I think myself and other people are in agreement that the conditions that we've agreed upon, if they will agree to that and you guys will agree to that, we can live with it. I mean, we're trying to meet everybody somewhere halfway. And I just really don't agree that, I don't really think any of you would really welcome this in your neighborhood. I don't think you're being honest. I don't, I don't think that's a fair thing. But like I said, we're trying to bend. The Catunas are nice and I do think they are very passionate about this, but I think, you know, we as homeowners have rights as well as them. And, you know, there's, we're all in a unanimous agreement that we're all opposed to this. So it would be nice if you guys could write these two conditions that we've all agreed upon so that we can all live together as harmonious neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy Vincent and I've lived on Arabian Circle for 18 years and basically I wanted to reiterate what Mimi just said. After we met with the Catunas, we knew that, and they agreed that they were okay with having the residents stay on the premises and also to make sure that, put in the MUP that it is a residential care facility for the elderly, that we could live with it. And any other thing besides that, unfortunately, we would have to go down further avenues, which we both don't want to do. But if, if you as board supervisors can put that back and can put that in the MUP, then we can go on our happy way and live with each other.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Debbie Gordon. My husband, Richard, and I have lived on Arabian Circle, but we've owned the house since, for almost 20 years now and we raised our daughters there. We love the neighborhood. We love the people who live on the neighborhood. We do not want an adversarial relationship with any of the couples or families on the neighborhood and we've never had that. So I regret that it's somewhat gotten confrontational up to this point, but I'm very pleased that there was a meeting last night that took place. I wish I could have been part of it and I sincerely hope that, that that progress that was made will continue and that we'll be able to come to an agreement, but not just for us, but for the entire community. I was very concerned at how the process went the last six months. I was concerned that I felt that the county was overlooking important safety issues, including the dangers at our intersection. Ms. Varnum mentioned there was only one accident, but in fact, there have been 78 injury accidents within 100 feet of this project site. I have to bring that up. I want that on the record. The only other condition, I agree with the conditions that, and I'm pleased with the conditions if, if they're written into the MUP. The only other thing I feel was very lightly treated has to do with signage. The Catunas have indicated that this is a residence and it's a residential care. They want it to blend in. Elam Glen on Eureka has no signage. You could argue whether it blends or not, but it does not have signage. Commercial businesses have signage and even though it's got frontage on Douglas, if it's meant to be a residence and to blend in with residential, the resident, with the community plan and with the residences, I feel there should be no signage on Douglas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? And do we have anybody on Zoom? We do have a comment on Zoom.
Chris Johnson, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, this is Chris Johnson again and I am one of the 300 people that initially signed their petition. And I still have grave concerns about this setting a very bad precedent for Granite Bay. The reality is, Mr. Peterson said, well, there's 200 beds within a mile. Well, within our, within our whole district, there's 800 beds approved. So, so obviously we- So, so obviously, we have way more of these senior facilities, bringing people in from the outside and having to deal with more traffic and so forth and so on, is, is a cost that we are all having to bear. It's a great cost to the circle, the neighboring homes, it's a great cost to the community for the traffic. The intersection, obviously, still is not ideal. I think it's going to continue to be a problem, and so on. The residents of the quiet circle have to worry about the liability of people wandering into their yards and paddocks, just so a new neighbor can operate a business that's going to generate probably $75,000 a month or more. I feel really sad. I feel like this is kind of a money grab that's taking advantage of this little neighborhood, and I'm sure now, once we do this one, every neighborhood's going to be getting more and more of these. So, I'm, I, if you continue to keep ignoring these negative impacts to the community, that for a business that honestly really isn't needed in this location, you know, I think this is a bad precedent, and I'm trying to understand why we are granting these extraordinary privileges, and I'm still requesting that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online or in the chambers? All right, we will close a public comment and bring it back for additional questions. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions for the Cattunas. You agreed to restrict the facility to elder care. You're not going to put a drug rehab or anything in there?
No.
And you're okay with no exercising on Arabian Way?
Supervisor Holmes, can we just maybe have one of you come to the podium to answer the questions? I appreciate that. Thank you. That way, everybody can hear.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm Regina Cattuna. We had no problems to add that, to be, just for residential care facility for elderly specific. Now, in regards to access to the road, I said, you know, we live in America, if that's legally correct, politically correct, I have no problems with that. I just don't want to sound like we are a facility in a communist country where you give specific rules or regulations. So, if you guys think that's politically and legally correct, I'm fine with that, to be restrictive to the Arabian Circle.
So, it's restricted to elder care and no drug rehab?
So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with elder care. That was my, that's what I want to do, and even if I want to sell it, I will sell it to somebody who wants to do the same type of business, because it's built that way. I'm building a facility that looks like a home, and it's designed to be specific for dementia, where I can treat them as a nurse, not sedate them, do a different, different therapy, like pet therapy for them, which is new to dementia, but it's working. So, it will specifically be built that way. But to say that most of the residents I take care of right now, they don't walk outside the facility. It's just that I'm worried that they will not look politically and legally good, but it's still okay with me, if you guys think that's good with you. So, I'm not sure about the laws and regulations, you know, that you guys have to look up to. Okay? I'm just, I, I've never been a political person in this country. I come from a communist country, so I'm more familiar with that. But if this to you looks politically correct, legally correct, to restrict that, it's fine.
Thank you very much.
Do we have the individual actually put her name on the record, please?
She did, actually.
Oh, did she? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Regina Cattuna, yes.
So, just for the record, I want everybody to know that I grew up next to, my parents' property was right adjacent to a state mental hospital, so I understand your concerns. What?
All right. Further discussion amongst our board, Supervisor Gustafson?
Um, yes, I, I wanted to ask county council and planning staff how those conditions might be enacted if there was an agreement, and I wanted to thank everybody for trying to work this out civilly between you, because that makes our job a lot easier in general, I hope.
Right. If I could start out, let's break down the condition that's been proposed. The first sentence is, the mitigated negative declaration for this minor use permit was calculated on the basis of residential care for the elderly. That's in fact not correct, and we, speaking on behalf of, of staff, planning staff in the county, I don't recommend you agree to that. The second sentence is residential care facilities restricted to the use as a quote-unquote residential care facility for the elderly as defined under state law. I'll let you speak to that, and I'm going to go on to the third sentence, and then we can come back.
So, just to clarify before she clarifies, you, the only reason you don't want us making that modification, the first part, is because the analysis wasn't actually done for that purpose.
It wasn't strictly limited to elderly residential care.
But there's nothing that would prohibit our board at this point in this process from adding this condition?
I would recommend you don't add a condition that's a legal conclusion on what the mitigated negative declaration stated.
No, I understand, but just as a condition of the, the minor use permit, we can add a condition.
Do you mean on the second sentence, or on this entire?
No, not, 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 somewhere in here.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Sorry.
What you're saying versus what is being heard are two very different things.
Right.
And we, I just want to be clear that our board does have the authority to restrict the use to elder care residents.
Based on what we've heard from the applicant who has agreed to that?
Right.
Yes, we absolutely do.
All right, thank you.
And I apologize for misunderstanding. The last sentence is in relation to what Mrs. Cattuna was talking about in terms of prohibiting or somehow preventing the residents from accessing onto Arabian Circle. First of all, under the law, even public, even private roads can be accessed by the public. Second of all, I have no idea how this would be enforced. So, I don't think there is a recommendation from staff or support from staff to limit who accesses onto Arabian Circle or not. So, that leaves the middle sentence as to the restriction which you've questioned, and yes, you can legally impose that if you wish to do so.
And then, I'll, I'll just kind of tag on to that. I think staff's position would be that adding the condition to have the residential care facility restricted to a residential care facility for the elderly as defined under state law, that's something we could do. We wouldn't, we typically didn't do that, and we didn't do that to say dementia care only, because it does require additional state licensing, meaning if we approve it here through our county use permit, and they go through the state licensing and don't get it, then they might have to come back and modify this use permit. So, that's just one point to make, that this is a state licensing requirement that they would be going for to get that elderly care or dementia care. Those are specialty.
Do they have to get a special license for elderly care?
Yes.
Versus just a residential care home? And she's raising her hand. She's the one who knows the answer, because she's the applicant. You need to come up, please. I want, I want to clarify, and we need to make sure that you're okay with this. So, yes, ma'am?
So, when I apply through the state, it's specifically a residential care home for elderly 65 and over.
So, that's what you already applied for?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't apply yet. I have to wait for the building, but that's all, that's what I will apply for.
Okay.
Yeah. In order, you cannot run a different population. You have to get a different location if you want to change the age. You cannot mix them. But you can get the residential care home for elderly with dementia. So, pretty much, I will have to get that specific approval and waiver, because 95% of my residents have dementia.
Okay. You have to get that anyway?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the license will be a waiver for dementia and hospice. That's what pretty much I'm using at this point with this specific population.
Thank you. All right.
If, if I could clarify a couple of things, the code we're talking about is Health and Safety Code, Section 1569 to Q1, and there is a specific definition for a residential care facility for the elderly. Now, what Delaney is mentioning is true, is typically speaking, the county doesn't condition the type of state license that an individual is going to get. That's why we have the more generic category of residential care facility 600 or over, and that's why we leave it, because Delaney's absolutely right. If this applicant cannot get that license for some reason, she would have to come back and amend that condition of approval you would have imposed for that specific license.
So, could it be for care for 65 and older?
You know, now, now you're, you're trying to craft what might not fit into any state license, and I don't think that's really, that's a good idea.
Well, what, if I may, what I, what I've heard is that even if she fails to secure that license, she's still willing at this point to condition the, the minor use permit with that restriction, and she's fine with it.
Yes, absolutely. As long as you understand.
I'm fine moving forward.
Yeah, as long as you understand the ramifications.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then, the other question is about the, the road and walking on the road.
Yeah, so from staff's perspective, what we're bringing forward is the planning commission's recommendation for the approval of the use permit, and they did, you know, take away that condition. So, what staff is supporting is what the planning commission, you know, approved. So, we would not be in support of restricting walking or use of Arabian Circle from the residents.
But again, the applicant is willing to do that as long as it's legal?
Correct. Staff's just not in support of that. If you guys would like to implement that, that's.
Okay, I just want to be clear, but you're okay with, and you've said that on the record. Okay.
Any other questions for me?
No, I have any questions for her.
No other questions?
No, I do have just some observations, but no questions for her at this point.
All right. And I'm just going to clarify, y'all are okay with that. You know, I feel uncomfortable saying, hey, you can't have people walk down the road, and there's concern about liability, but that happens almost in any piece of property, no matter where you are. And what I would hate to see is people out there saying, oh, somebody walked down the street and, you know, took a little stroll, and then, and then the neighbors get upset. So, I have a concern about it. It sounds like there is some agreement that you have made, which I really appreciate, and so, I'm, I'm okay with it, because you all have agreed, which I appreciate, and I'm not going to take any additional comments from the public, because we've closed the public hearing, and this is just time for us to deliberate. So, if, if you all are comfortable with that, I, you know, I certainly can live it. It's, it's your, it's your property and your business. I did have a question about signage, though, that's what we didn't address, and I don't know if there are any conditions about signage. Delaney, would you please address that?
Yeah, so the proposed project didn't come forward with signage at this point. It would be up to like a design review and applicable to our sign ordinance. As specific to, is, can a sign beyond Douglas Boulevard? I'd have to look into our sign ordinance to see what would be allowed. However, it would be pretty restrictive on the size, and it'd also have to be reviewed by our development review committee for design and everything, so there would be another review process.
It's not a part of this project?
There's no signage, it's just part of this use permit.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Yular?
Yeah, just, thank you. Wanted to, to address a couple of the comments that have been made in general and kind of share some of my life experience after 50 years in Granite Bay. First, when I lived next to a facility like this, I actually spent 14 years next to a horse boarding facility that had 18 stalls right next door to me. And so, I had the traffic associated with people coming to ride their horses, I had the dust associated with it and all the rest, so, and that was on a private road as well. So, yes, in the rural nature of, of Plaster County, up off Auburn-Polsom, I did live next to something that generated quite a bit more traffic than I anticipate this will, and quite a bit more smell and dust than I hope this will. So, I have lived in that kind of environment. But to the gentleman's point, when I sold from that particular location and moved over off of Itchy Acres and Oak Pine, even though they are very heavily trafficked, they are private roads and used extensively by cyclists, and we had some woman not paying attention, went over a little speed bump on her bike, and we all had to pony up to go and get an attorney to defend. So, I appreciate the concern about people using the private road and the liability it does create for the owners. So, to the extent that the applicants, yeah, you're the appellant's, the applicants are willing to go along with that condition, I, I'm fine with that condition as well. As far as some of the comments that we've heard about the need in our community, just two things. Number one, as Sandy and I have had this conversation before, I, I concur with her that there are some abuses of this particular part of our zoning ordinance. I think that we might want to revisit the zoning ordinance as it regards these facilities and further identify appropriate parcels or areas or conditions for these types of facilities within that RA zone district. This one being right on Douglas Boulevard and all the other associated uses that are right on Douglas Boulevard, while their address will be Arabian Circle, I do view this more as a Douglas Boulevard project than an Arabian Circle project. And so, I think it does meet the consistency standard associated with a project on Douglas, right across the street from the vet and from the library and those other uses. So, I, Sandy has expressed her concern over the years about the use of that RA zone for this purpose, and I don't disagree. I think we, it might behoove the board in the future to take a look at, at where that could be restricted. I, I will tell you candidly, if this project were even one lot in on Arabian Circle and not right on Douglas, I wouldn't be supporting it. But I do view this more as a Douglas project than an Arabian Circle project. And then, as far as the need in the community additionally, I, unfortunately, I know all too well the need in our community, having, much like Sandy in her vitality, my mother-in-law was very vigorous and very vital in her home in Granite Bay, up until she couldn't be. And at that point, my wife and I had to scramble to find suitable accommodations for her, and there were none to be found in Granite Bay, period. We had to put her down off of Sunrise in Roseville, and we had to wait at that in order for a room that happened to be coming available in a suitable facility that we were comfortable with, the likes of which I'm sure these folks are, are going to run. So, I, within the last year, I personally experienced the need for a facility like this, and was unable to find one in my own community at that particular moment in time. So, I appreciate the neighbors having taken the time to get together and have the conversation, and I am very comfortable moving this project forward with the conditions that we discussed. And so, I'll make that a motion.
We have a motion and a second, and before we move forward with the vote, I do want to say thank you to the, the residents who had a conversation with the applicants. Thank you for working together. Really appreciate that. I know this is a, a challenge. I, I had an opportunity to drive through that property last week to see the area, and based on the location of that parcel, as Supervisor Yular said, plenty of space landscaping, a use that my father is in a care facility, is, is not mobile getting up and walking around, other than just around the building's property, and I'm very grateful for, for a very good facility. It seems like that's a very good location, and I appreciate you all working with the applicant on that.
I'm going to ask for the record that planning staff come up and read into the record where this condition will be contained.
Okay.
Getting that condition on the fly for you guys. So, what we'd like to do is modify condition number one. At the end of the condition, we would like to add the following language. The residential care facility.
I'm, I'm sorry. May I ask what, what page are you on? Where are you reading from?
Yeah.
So, the language where we're reading from is actually email correspondence from the appellant's where they discussed that.
Now, where are you proposing we insert this?
In the conditions of approval, condition number one.
On page?
Page 583.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, the language to be added under condition number one at the end. So the language to be added under condition number one at the end will be, the residential care facility is restricted to use as a residential care facility for the elderly as defined under state law. The owner must reapply and be granted another minor use permit prior to seeking any other license or providing any other type of residential care. In addition, the owner agrees that no care resident of the facility shall be allowed to access any portion of the private road, Arabian Circle and Palomino Court past the care facility property line.
Okay. I mean, do, do we need to specify the southern boundary of the care facility or something along those lines as opposed to? Because otherwise, they're out on Douglas and that would just be an issue. Okay, all right. Yeah, happy to amend my motion to reflect that, the addition of that specific language.
All right, and I heard a second from Supervisor Holmes. All right, so with that, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, for the conversation and the work done by staff. All right, we are going to move to closed session. I'll have county council report.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider two items. One, existing litigation and the other, labor negotiations.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and report out from closed session.
The board met in closed session to consider one item of existing litigation, Placer County Deputy Sheriff's Association versus County of Placer. The board heard a report and provided direction. The board then conducted a conference with labor negotiations. The board heard a report and provided direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. And with that, we have no more business before our board, so we will adjourn to our next meeting, which is a special meeting on Tuesday, November 10th. We will meet at the Community Development Resources Agency. I don't know what time, but that's when we'll meet, on the 10th. We'll start at 9:00 AM. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.